Sorry for the delay, everyone. Let's get started. Before we get to the agenda, I want to make sure we know who is on the board is going to be here for our next meeting, which is Easter Monday, so we can decide whether we're going to have a meeting on Easter Monday or not. You're here?
Not sure.
Current ratio?
Fifty percent.
Fifty. You're fifty-fifty. You're a no.
No.
How about this end?
I've been trying to get a flight that would bring me back in time, but it's nothing.
Okay.
Unless I, you know, leave at 4:00 AM.
Yeah, okay.
I'm here.
You're here. So it's just two for certain and three, two no's and one maybe. Procedurally, what do we need to do to cancel that meeting?
If you let us know, I'll make that update on the Village website.
Okay, so we're going to cancel that Easter Monday, the 21st, because we're just not sure if we're going to have a quorum on that one. All right. First on the agenda is 36 Windmill Lane.
Good evening, Board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marsinski, and Bruin for the applicant, 36 Windmill Lane LLC. With me tonight is Lisa Zaloga, our architect, and Ed Armis, our engineer. I understand this board had reviewed preliminarily our site plan. This is Phase Three, and that you had chosen to coordinate with other involved agencies, in particular, the Health Department on the zoning board with respect to seeker. And I think the time period in which your review was over was like the 3rd of April, and that you're now in a position to assume lead agency status. And I would assume that you would also proceed to adopt a negative declaration as soon as possible. Among the plans that you have and the revised plans, I believe we also submitted for the consultant's review. She had specifically requested a copy of the last notice of incomplete application from the Health Department. Because we've been stating on the record, one of the things the Health Department will not do is move forward unless and until the Village has provided a copy of the Village's seeker determination. And that is number two on the notice of incomplete application dated April 3, 2025. All the other items that were on there, in particular, the revisions to the plan, were submitted and back to the Health Department. So essentially, the last thing for them to proceed with their application and grant the approval is the Village's seeker determination. One of the outstanding items they had, and this board may be aware, is the sanitary system that is being, a new sanitary system, which is being provided, would extend further into the Village property. And in easement, the Village Board adopted a resolution a year ago to accept an easement, and that easement was reviewed, submitted, and recorded, and a copy submitted to the Village and the Health Department. So the Village Board is anxious for this to get done. In fact, I believe the mayor has told our client that he would like to see these improvements in the Village right away be done before Memorial Day, if possible, to avoid disruption in the Village. And thus, we're here asking this board to help us move forward. And the thing to do is to adopt the seeker determination and negative declaration. I have to point out, for the record, we believe it's a type-two action, but for whatever reason, it's been listed as an unlisted action. The other thing I would point out is our review, and you'll see the latest revisions to our plans, I want to point out a couple of things. Number one, our plans were revised a month or so ago, in particular with respect to sewage flow and sewage flow rates. We removed the two apartments, which removed a significant amount of sanitary flow. What that did is actually put our application back to a point where there's actually, our proposed expansion of the restaurant does not result in an increase in sanitary flow. It's basically neutral in that regard, because we removed the higher-flow apartments. I'd also point out, this board is well aware, our second-phase improvements are underway. There are no further buildings, per se. All the drainage that was required by this board on previous site plan was already approved and actually installed. We don't expect any off-site drainage impacts. There's no parking impacts, because our application, and we revised our application when we were pointed out a section in the code that indicates for outdoor dining, there is no parking requirement under the Village code when you're adjacent to a public parking lot. And as such, our application to the zoning board has been revised so that we only seek in a waiver of four spaces, and we're ready to pay the fee that's necessary. And as this board is well aware, if you haven't reviewed the comprehensive plan, all these actions in our request are consistent with the comprehensive plan. I have a section, a piece of paper you can review at your leisure, but this, I don't know if staff have provided you with any of this, or how I submit it to the zoning board at their last meeting. It's basically a summary of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Number one, you know this corner of the Village is looking for redevelopment. The comprehensive plan actually highlights and recommends that any redevelopment in the Village were to occur. The most appropriate locations would be the lots fronting on Nugent and Windmill Lane. The residents that were noted in the comprehensive plan study indicated there were a need for more things to do in the evenings, such as restaurants, bars, and other entertainment, and that the residents were supportive of making outdoor dining a permanent feature since COVID, and improved the downtown vibrancy, support local businesses. And apart from regulatory changes, the Village should support physical improvements to the public realm, as well as investments by private business to provide outdoor dining in an attractive and uniform way. And lastly, it specifically recommends that where the public off-street parking, public off-street parking is, is that we support and be as flexible as possible in the downtown area, and encourage fees in lieu of providing public parking, especially when you're within 100 feet of a public lot, which this property is. So I make those recommendations, and I would hope this board will move forward as soon as possible with any seeker determination. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those, or architects, or engineer.
Any questions? Just want to make sure we have the correct facts set here. At our last meeting, I think the planning board determined that the planning board is the lead agency for the SECR determination, correct?
That's right.
I know that the plan has moved around a little bit, and some things were resubmitted since our last meeting. I'd like to ask H2M to respond to some of the more technical comments that you made, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page with respect to Health Department and some of the other, specifically Health Department, some of the other things that you mentioned.
Yeah, I would say, and that would be great, but you know, as you know, Health Department approval isn't necessary for site plan approval. It's necessary for getting a building permit, in particular where the Health, we're not designing a parking lot with paving or drainage or anything that would otherwise interfere with the layout, which this board would be concerned about. The parking's off-site in the Village parking lot. There's nothing on-site that this board has jurisdiction over that part of it.
So this is the planning board?
Correct.
And we'd like to see the plan for this property?
Absolutely.
And how it impacts the surrounding area. The one thing that I recall was that there was a, that alleyway just to the north of Shippeys that accesses that, the major part that goes by the bank there, and there was a drain there, that the last plan showed being covered up, but yet no, no plan to manage runoff for that area to the north of, along that alleyway. And frankly, that's a concern of ours, is just what's going to happen there if we're closing off that storm drain that's right there in that driveway.
That's out on the Village property, correct?
Correct. But am I, was there anything else that I'm missing?
Yeah, so I think that that was one of the site plan issues, though, that this project's complicated because of the easement on Village property is, there's a lot of sight with that's actually occurring on Village property on that easement, including removing a catch basin. But that does require, you know, drainage plans for where that is going to be rerouted and how that drainage is.
Lisa, can you pull the mic a little closer so we can pick it up? Thank you.
Drainage plans for how that's going to be rerouted and where that, you know, how much capacity is it handling now? And does the, maybe the area is graded in such a way, and there's existing capacity to contain it, but I don't have anything to support that conclusion. As far as the, the, there was some, some of the comments still, you know, with what the Health Department in their comment letter suggested were some of the same inconsistencies I was still seeing with the precise number of seats, you know, being one version of seats. It's a small discrepancy, but they've been changing, there've been slight modifications. So now it looks like there's, physically, we see 70 seats, but it's saying 69, and this does impact the capacity.
That was corrected. That was corrected with the submission to the zoning board as well.
Oh, was it? So there is an updated one that it's corrected, so it's consistent?
Yes.
Because I, you know, the most recent I saw, I still counted 70 seats in that space. So I'll look, make sure I'm looking at the most updated version. Yeah, I mean, from a seeker's standpoint, the major, like, the environmental concerns that would stand out in a project like this would be the impacts to groundwater and surface water from the septic, and presuming they're able to get a plan that's approved by the Suffolk County Department of Health that would mitigate those potential impacts. And then the drainage issue of ensuring that there's not, that the drainage is sufficiently dealt with, and there's not a drainage issue created by the removal of the catch basin in that low-lying part of the lot. As far as the other impacts, you know, we're not, there's not, I'm not particularly concerned about community character. It seems consistent with the community character of the downtown area. The architectural review boards are reviewing the visual impacts. So those would be the ones of concern. And I think, at least for the sanitary flow, that the Suffolk County Department of Health would be the means of mitigating that one.
So, Mr. Bruin, I think the planning board loves the plan, right, of the property. I mean, you know, we've been saying that for a while, that it's beautiful plan, and it really improves the area down there, and we're all for it. But this planning board is also very much a dot your i's, cross your t's type planning board before we're going to move forward. So until we see a, what, hesitant to use the word "complete," but it's small c, complete package that addresses all the issues, so we can make an informed decision, and it's not sort of a death-by-a-thousand-cuts-type approach, you know, we're going to hold off. Okay, so, you know, the ball is really in your court to get us that information.
Can I just ask our consultant whether or not, do the plans show what's happening with that drainage pool?
All right, Ed Armis. The drainage in that area, the easement, is all septic, that area. And there's certain requirements, separations from storm drainage, catch basins, leaching pools from septic. So there can't be any septic within that whole, I mean, drainage within that whole area post-septic. The area too, since the Village is also proposing seven parking spots in there, that's going to create a high spot, which is going to have to, because there can't be any drainage within those parking spots that are proposed, that's going to be a high spot between the post-parking across the alleyway towards the restaurant, I mean, the museum property. And then from there, it's going to be the high spot. And then it's going to go towards the south, where there is an existing catch basin, and to the north, northeast, which is where the new retention area was made by the bank, and also going out to Windmill Lane, where there is existing catch basins there. So basically, that's the way it's going to have to be. It's just going to be a high spot that bleeds out. But there is lawn area, and it's just the parking area and the alleyway.
So do we, do we have anything that shows how that's going to work, or we just?
No, these are sanitary plans, so there's not grading, curb heights, things like that.
Yeah.
And as for the septic, sanitary capacity, when we get the sanitary approval, it's not going to say the restaurant's approved for X amount of seats, because we're grandfathered into a flow. So it's going to say we're approved for 1,323 gallons per day.
Right.
So the going back and forth about 69, 70 seats, it doesn't really matter in regards to the sanitary, for the septic review with the Health Department.
But isn't that how they get to the calculation, is through the capacity of the restaurant?
No, not really, because the-
The plans show-
Plans show it, but either way, it's still working into a number that we're backing into the 1,323 gallons per day. So if it's 69 seats inside, we're taking away an exterior seat out in the patio. So either way, it's not adding in additional seating. It's still backing into that one number, because we took out the apartments and gained that volume that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think we're saying different, I don't think we're having, I think the issue is just that the plans match the calculations, so that it's clear that you're meeting the requirements of not exceeding that number, because we know that that's the max you'll be allowed.
Yeah, the septic plan has 69 for the indoor seating, and it matches Lisa's plan of 69 indoor seating.
Okay, I'll look again, because I did not see the revised indoor seating plan, so.
As far as the drainage, what would the Village need to show exactly what Mr. Armis just described? That drainage pool is being removed. By the way, the Village Board has asked us to reconstruct 10 new parking spots in that area where it's, you know, and we're not getting credit for that at all, as far as parking calculations are concerned. But that being said, that's drainage out in the drainage parking lot, Village parking lot. I don't know what we would do for us to demonstrate that the Village is going to retain it or deal with its storm.
So there's a couple of pieces here. One is what, there's existing drainage in that lot, so it's the capacity of that existing drainage for what is proposed and what is existing. So, you know, and that, of course, is the existing drainage minus the catch basin that has to be removed.
It's actually a catch box. It's not a basin.
Okay.
So it's a catch box that's piped over in the direction of the museum property, but when that catch box was inspected, it was all silted over. So the pipe, if it is in there, it's buried, and you can't be seen. That's why it always fills up on the corner of Shippeys, because there's no capacity in a two-by-two box-
Right.
-to hold any water. So that's why there's always a standing puddle there. And so you're not losing a leaching, a catch, leaching structure. You're only losing the catch box, which doesn't drain anywhere. So regrading that whole area actually helps the problem that exists. But there can be additional leaching, one leaching pool put in, which would offset the new Village parking area. It just has to be remotely piped, so it's away from the septic system.
So have you had discussions with trustees about who's going to do that? The Highway Department? Are you guys doing that, or what's happening?
There was talk with Steve Phillips initially about the layout-
Yeah.
...and the concept there. So, but we put that on our plan just to reflect what the Village was looking at doing.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know if that's been set in stone, but that was their intent, to gain some parking in on that corner. So people weren't actually parking on the, outside the curb, where people were trying to make the turn going towards, like Job's Lane, coming in off of Windmill.
Yeah.
That was a little bit of a problem. So this way, it's, the parking setbacks, so the people are out of the travel lane, going north and south across by the museum property in back of rotations. So it's all clear there.
Yeah, you lost me on that one.
Okay. Basically, the travel lane between rotations and museum property-
Yeah.
People were parking alongside the curb.
Yeah.
They just got rid of that parallel parking there, but by doing the-
That parallel parking that's by the grassy area where rotation stores the bikes.
Correct. This new parking area would be inside the grass area.
Right.
So people outside that travel lane.
Right. Okay. So I guess the question that I'm asking is, I think we need clarity as to how the storm runoff is going to be handled back there, based on all the things that are happening, right? And I don't know if that's, whether you guys are taking responsibility for that, or the trustees, or the Highway Department, but, you know, in order for us to make a seeker determination, right?
Well, it's really continued on the-
I think that's part of the consideration.
I think it's continued on the Village using that parking, because, one, if they're going to create that parking area, basically, they're going to increase the amount of runoff within that whole area.
Right.
So-
And it's already underwater when it rains now.
Yeah, so, but that's, if they're not going to do it-
So now it's time to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right? So we're going to try and fix that, right?
It is. We, well, it really should be done when septic is done, which is a very short window.
Right.
So if the Village wants to do it, or we can make, you know, a stop, so you can rip the curb out, and then make that little park sort of lay it off.
So look, I think the consensus here is to move forward on this as quickly as we can, as soon as we have, you know, everything in front of us that we can make an accurate determination. So as soon as you can get us that information, you know, we can bring this to a vote.
Yeah, unfortunately, are you meeting next week? That's the time period we have.
So I will call a special meeting. If you can get it back that fast, and we have attendance, you know, we'll schedule something to help get this done. Because I know, look, it's a great, in my opinion-
I was going to say, you just canceled your meeting in two weeks.
Well, that's the-
In which case, if we go a month-
Yeah, that's a normally scheduled meeting, but we're more, we're more than happy to call a meeting. You know, there's certain notice periods that we've got to deal with, but we're more than happy to do a non-regularly scheduled meeting to help move this thing along. As long as we have all the information, we need to make an accurate decision. So if that's what you want to do, let us know. We'll make sure that we get a quorum here to help you out. But, you know, but we're with you to try and-
We'd like to do that.
We're with you to try and push this along, because I know you want to open it by-
It's all turning on the Health Department, so absent your seeker determination, they're not going to move forward at all.
Does anybody disagree with that view here?
Can I ask a question about the Health Department letter? In addition to asking for the seeker determination from the Village, it also asks for the approved plans. Is it your understanding that they need the full approval from the Village?
No.
Because that was in that line, that point to, it actually said, "copy of town-approved plan showing sanitary layout."
They want to see the sanitary plan. We submitted the easement to them, but the sanitary plan, which is actually what they're approving, is the same plan that's approved by the Village Board, so.
Oh.
So they're asking for the, when they say, "copy of town-approved plan showing sanitary layout," you're asking-
I'm not sure exactly, but I would doubt it's a chicken and the egg, and we never get there.
Yeah, well, that's, it's-
You never, you never do a site plan approval before you get final Health Department. You get Health Department before you get your building permit.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, because I'm like, if you're saying it's the seeker holding you up, I see two things there that look like they need town approval.
We'll clarify that with the Health Department. But again, I would say that a seeker determination shouldn't be contingent on what the Health Department is doing or not, if you have an understanding we're in compliance with their standards, number one. Number two is, I don't believe they're going to hold up our application once they receive your seeker determination. We'll talk to the Health Department about that.
Yeah, but look, we will work with you to move as quickly-
We appreciate that.
...as we can to get this approved, as long as we have all the information we need.
So if you get the site plan, it's going to go to H2M for review, and then back to your comments for the, before the next meeting?
Well, we're going to get this information on the drainage to them, and the question is, how and where are you going to, could you schedule a meeting tentatively pending that? I mean, you're not going to meet to have it scheduled.
Yeah. So Alex, remind me what the notice periods are for a meeting on this? I mean, can we have to, you know, how quickly can we officially schedule something?
I'd have to double-check what our meeting requirements are. This is not a new public hearing.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing.
But we, they are, I believe, next on the zoning board for April 24th. So I don't think anything would happen before then.
And the other thing to consider with the seeker is that the, I mean, one of the pieces we needed to clarify tonight was who was respons, is this part of this application, or is the Village dealing with the drainage and the grading of that lot? And I was, and if you feel comfortable moving forward with the seeker determination, we could, it's also, the language of the negative declaration could reflect that it's contingent upon-
Health Department.
The Health Department approval of the septic plan, and the adequate, the drainage being adequately addressed. If their plan, because that's our understanding, that they're going to address those things, and if they don't, we would have to reopen the seeker, because the plan would no longer match what the planning board had evaluated.
Yeah, that's fair.
That would be great, because the mayor is still investigating, like, how that parking is going to lay out. So to hold us up, to hold us up for that-
Yeah, I'm still, yep. So I think we just coordinate closely on this. So as soon as you can get us something, get it to H2M, get it to Alex. He'll coordinate with us, right?
I think he just walked by, if you can grab him, and then come back in. Why don't you just talk to him? Just talk to him about, like, what's going on, maybe he'll get that for you.
And, you know, we'll get something scheduled as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Right.
So are there any further questions?
Anyone else? No?
No.
Just, Easter gets in the way. Unfortunately, I've got to go away for Easter in a couple of days.
Is anybody able to change their plans and be here?
Let's, let's, let's see what that timing is. Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving right along, let's go to RRFACF, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening. It's nice to be here on this typical early spring East End day. When I moved back home a few years ago, I said, oh, now I know why I was so depressed in high school in the spring. In any event, my name is John Bennett. I represent, very proudly, the applicant, the Fowler family. Bailey Larkin from my firm is with me, Vincio Adiello from the Reiner Group, and the Fowler family, Major and her two sons, and some in-laws, Ricky's wife, Marissa, and Ricky's father-in-law, Mark Epley, I'm sure you all know. This is a 27.89 acre parcel, and it's located at the intersection of Fowler and Wickapog. I guess you all have it, but I'll put it down on the, you've all seen this. So it's in an R80 zoning district. If you go down towards, when you first start at Wickapog, that's in a three-acre zone. But as you get down towards the end of Wickapog, these are two-acre zones. So if this property were developed per the zoning district, it would yield 12 lots. We're proposing a seven lot, so that there's a value. This is a yield plan, which was part of the sketch plan, so we're 12 conforming lots for seven. And this is as a result of at least a two-year process before this board. This represents, the seven lot plan represents about 58% of the allowed as-of-right development on the property. The original application filed during the sketch plan process proposed 10 lots. And again, as a result of an over-two-year process, the applicant reduced voluntarily to lose the subdivision to a seven lot plan. And then sketch plan approval was granted on the seven lot plan on July 15, 2024. I think it's important for all the board members to remember that this was a long process for sketch plan approval. It was a substantive public hearing, and it was agreed that the applicant and the board and all the consultants would take our time and come up with a configuration and an open-space design that we could move forward with. It was a very thorough and deliberate process with a lot of back and forth, and not only the public hearing, but there were many appearances before the board. So what is before the board is some very significant concessions by the owner, to really come to an agreement to allow a smooth application process, and some voluntary concessions. I don't think, if you've been involved with subdivision review in any meaningful way, you'll know that the applicants will try to work with the board to come up with something that the board can feel comfortable with and move the application right along. try to work with the board to come up with something, uh, that the board can feel comfortable with and move the application right along. Uh, that's why you see a seven lot plan. If this is going to be something candidly that would be mired in the seeker process, we might as well come back with a full yield plan. And I think that's in, in implicit, and when people come in with a reduced density plan, certainly is. I mean, it's actually specifically recognized in the Southampton Town Code. But it's done, been done in the, in the village of Southampton in a less formal, but nevertheless meaningful manner. So we're at about fifty eight percent of the potential development on the lot. And, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about the subdivision that I handled to the south, which is a, in a, a two lot subdivision, but it's a max yield subdivision. It's three acre lot and a two acre lot, which is also on former Fowler property. It was on former Fowler property. This is Fowler property. There's a twenty five percent ag reserve area, and at the time of the filing of the subdivision map, the village had no mandatory cluster provisions, none, zero. The master plan suggested an open, twenty five percent open space, which has been achieved here. But the village law that sets up the mandatory twenty five percent does not apply to this application. It's been grandfathered by that law by its express terms. Local law twenty eight of twenty twenty four says, this proposed law shall not apply to any application which is made and is pending or in the approval process as of the date of resolution was approved, authorized in the local law to be noticed for public hearing. So despite the fact that this, um, subdivision got in before local law twenty eight of twenty twenty four and merely had to be filed before that date, um, we have nevertheless provided twenty four percent, twenty five percent. When I say open space agricultural reserve, it's important that everyone remember that this is not open space like you would see up in the Moraine where the property either sits with a homeowners association or gets deeded to the municipality. This is part of the, um, the town, the villages, the counties programmed to try to maintain agriculture. So these are agricultural reserve parcels that are retained by the, uh, owner and the farming continues. One of the things I'm going to have, uh, Vin Guardiello from Reiner Group talk about is how we've tried to, uh, create a two-step process so that we can, uh, continue to farm some of the property that's, uh, outside of the open space by way of these temporary cul-de-sacs. They're a very, very common plan. I don't know, I guess, I've seen them for so many years. They're called reverts. And it's sort of like a springing road, so this is a reverter. It's called the cul-de-sac reverter. And once this road is continued down, uh, to the, to the north, as it were, this cul-de-sac goes away. It's a, it's a reverter, and this road is opened up. The whole idea is that if you may just put the road in now in full, which would be, if this was a developer, uh, that's probably what would happen because the developer would just own the lots, lots of the market as quickly as possible. The Fowler family wants to continue to see if they can farm, a, a, a good portion of this property that is not contained in the voluntary twenty five percent open space, and thus the staging. But I'm going to let, uh, Vin Guardiello tell you exactly how's that, how that works. Uh, so that's, that's important for everybody to understand. So again, that reduction from the twelve, twelve lot yield and the original ten proposed lots, and now seven lots, it's even less than sixty percent of the yield. Uh, the applicant and Rich Warren of Interscience and I met with multiple brokers and real estate prof- professionals uh, because we wanted to see exactly what we were giving up, and it was unanimous, uh, finding of the brokers that the ten lot plan on a cluster would yield more than the proposed seven lot yield. So this is a very significant involuntary economic concession. It's a concession because we heard that's what the board wanted to see. We decided to be, uh, accommodative. So it's a significant concession. And I candidly, given my long experience in the subdivision process, unimpressed with anyone who thinks that any, any, anything other. I'm not saying this board is set that far from it, um, but I'm unimpressed with anyone who thinks this isn't a massive concession. It's a little bit, you know, only a little bit more than half the development. We've essentially upzoned this property from two acre, in effect, to a four, four and a half acre, uh, property. So that's, that's massive. There was a former board member who was talking about what the board was, was giving us, and I was scratching my head saying, hmm, that's interesting. I claim as the fee owner of this property. The give has been the reduction from twelve to ten. So again, I'm going to last, if I can, just interrupt my presentation to ask Vin Guardiello, explain how we are suggesting that we, uh, stage the building of this road so that the Fowler's can continue to farm. Could you just explain that? Because I think it's something that, it's a concept that I'm very familiar with, but oftentimes people see roads put in, fall in one shot. And, uh, and if you could explain this to the board, how we're talking about this.
Good afternoon or good evening, members of the board. My name is Vincent Guardiello. I'm principal with the Reiner Group, and we are the engineers and surveyors retained by the Fowler's on this application. What we've done with these, uh, right-of-ways or the right-of-ways that are proposed, uh, being that this is a phased project, what we've elected to do is create right-of-ways for the lots six and seven via easements. In the planning staff memo, they identified those lots as being landlocked. That is not the case. Access to those lots would be provided with an easement over a portion of those lots. So should we move forward and, and build out phase two within a portion of lots four, five, and six, and seven, that, there would be right-of-way easements on all those in a configuration that would provide a fifty foot wide right-of-way with a cul-de-sac at the end. The size of the cul-de-sac is in accordance with the design standards of the, uh, village code. And this would be the means for us to, uh, provide access to those lots. As opposed to creating a specific right-of-way where the lot areas of lots six, seven, five, and four are not included in the right-of-way. And that there would be a separate parcel that consists of a right-of-way. And the question then becomes, should the development of phase two come not happen, what happens with that area? And whether that just remains a right-of-way, um, and a separate tax map parcel. Um, I did have conversation with, um, the village's planning consultant, and she voiced to me that, that is not her preference for us in proposing that. She voiced that it was not the planning board's, um, position to accept that means. And, you know, that's why we're here to kind of explain why we proposed it that way. You have a, you know, a lot of properties in the village which fee title is owned to the, to the property owner, and there's a right-of-way over it. And the, there's rights to pass and repass. With any private road, there's always the question of who owns the underlying land. If you have a straight road that runs down, it's private, well, everyone owns up to the center line of the road, and they take their property lines and bring it to the center line of the road. Because this road is not one straight road, and there's a bit of a turn to it, those lines are not exactly straight to the center line of this right-of-way. And that's why we're proposing it as such.
And again, the whole idea for that is to allow for the farming to continue on lots six and seven and five, so that we're not building the road at one point. Now, let me, let me explain something about this r- right-of-ways. There are a couple of ways to have a road. The, the village law states that you, you can't require someone to dedicate a road to the public. Oftentimes, you'll see subdivision maps where the town will want to offer a dedication, or the village will want to offer a dedication, and the subdivision is not, does not have to do that. So the fee title, and, and it's entirely within the law. So the, and, and, so the fee title remains in private ownership. This is going to be a private road. You can't require me to dedicate it. So what happens, um, typically on a private road, everyone owns, if you look at typical deed, you own to the center of the, of the right-of-way. The owner on either side owns to the center of the right-of-way. It may not, it may come as a surprise to some people, but they're actually public roads. Actual roads in municipal road systems where the public owns nothing more than an easement, a mere easement over those roads, even though they're in the, in the, in the municipal's highway system. But the fee goes from either side of the road. Why are we doing this? If you require us to put the road in, in full, then obviously it becomes difficult to farm, a farm that's bisected by a road. So there's got to be a, a way to do this.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
But I thought we always discussed doing the roads here in a two-phase approach.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So why now are we talking about the village planning board requiring you to put the entire road in at the beginning?
I just wanted, I wanted to explain that there was some back and forth about some concerns with, with planning staff.
Well, I think it was the, the, the method of, of the right-of-way.
Method of getting there.
Like what, how, you know, how, how is, the term landlocked was used in the planning memo. None of these lots, none of these lots are landlocked.
So what I don't understand then is, um.
And in all fairness, the memo comes after about, uh, the new staff member, the memo comes after about two years.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I, I thank the planner for making herself available, and we've had discussions about it. And, and we're, we're here to speak through what the intents are, what the planning board is looking for.
But, but, so, sorry.
If I could just chime in for one second, just to clarify that the sketch plan that was approved didn't do this. So it, it, this is not new. The request isn't new.
Right. The, the sketch plan, which we did not draw, the sketch plan showed a right-of-way, a, a separate tax map parcel.
Correct.
That was a right-of-way that was used to serve as access to, you know,
Understood.
I'll say four, five, six, and seven.
If that road, if it was a right-of-way and that road was done in two phases, as opposed to what you're talking about here is an easement approach as opposed to a right-of-way approach, the former approach would not impact your ability to farm.
It does, however we get there, I think we're getting, uh, uh, mired down in an unnecessary argument. How, however we get there.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's, I just want to make sure that no one thinks these are landlocked. Why would you create parcels that are landlocked? The whole idea is, once that road goes down there, they're not. So in order to, to take care of someone's concern of them being a landlocked, we, we're talking about them as an easement, but if you're talking about, that these will be, this will be staged.
But, you know, there's a preference for right-of-way as opposed to easement in.
No, you're thinking of, you're thinking of the preference, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but that, these, these will not be flag lots. These aren't flag lots. You're not going to, you don't have to worry about that.
Lot, slot seven is.
No, it's not.
Looks like a flag to me.
No, it's not. It's more than forty feet wide. I mean, specifically, we specifically made it more than forty feet wide, and that's the definition of a flag lot.
And if I can chime in that the, uh, page ninety five of the comprehensive plan, uh, update does specify that flag lot should be discouraged, but if permitted, the access to the lot be by ownership and not by easement over another's property. So there is a request for no easements for access to lots.
That's what's done here. This is not a, this is, this is, this is a forty foot wide front. It's not, by definition, it's not a flag lot.
But, John, you know, John.
And, and by the way.
I want to disagree, because I think we're talking about the same thing. I, I just don't understand why, you know, I thought we had, it seems like we're going back over old territory, or I thought we'd agreed to.
I thought we had it as well.
Right-of-way through there, and you can do it in two phases. We've already.
We're going to find some way to do it. I just, I, I had, I had to bring to the board's attention that we're not creating landlocked, landlocked blocks.
Understand, but, you know, we don't like easement, access by easement, which is what you're do, what you're now talking about.
No, it's not. What you're going to have here.
Didn't you just say easement?
What you're going to have here.
It's a right-of-way easement.
It's a right-of-way easement. The roads that you travel down on the public roads, half of them were created by dedication. Roads in the village of Southampton, half of them were created by dedication. And, but, let me finish. In other words, the, the municipality owns fee title to the road.
Yep.
The other half of them, the municipality owns a right-of-way, and the owner is owned to the center section. That happens with all private roads.
But this is with private roads, because we're still talking about private road here, yeah, it's private road.
I think we, we're going to find a way to do this. I mean, I, it's just a question of.
So I don't understand why, why.
Because I was concerned when somebody said we were creating landlocked parcels, which we're not.
Okay.
So also, if I could just point out that the first part of the road, which is proposed to be a private road, is not done in this fashion. So it only shifts when we get to the second portion, that it's by easement and not by a dedicated private road that would be owned by an HOA.
This is, says right here, a proposed private road right-of-way.
Right.
It's weird, we're talking about semantics.
No, 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 no.
Are you trying to, are you trying to inhibit us from doing this two-phase?
I want to understand the, the statement.
John.
Am I misunderstanding where the lot lines are drawn? My understanding is that the road is not within the lots, one, two, and two, that first part of the road.
Correct.
But that it becomes part of the lots after that. And that's the only discrepancy is the planning board is requesting that it be a dedicated private right-of-way that the lots come up to, and that that, that then could be owned in common in an HOA and maintained by that HOA. And it solves a lot of issues going forward if it's done in that in fashion.
I'm not going to create, I'm not going to create an HOA where I don't need to do it. I don't need an HOA for the open space because it's going to be held by the owner.
So John, let me ask you.
If you want us to create, uh, if you want us to create this in some way that's separate, the lots are so over-zoning, it doesn't matter.
So the, if I understand what Lisa's saying, your approach, uh, with respect to how the roads are, the property that the road sits on, from the phase A road to the phase B road, are different structures? Is that what you're saying?
Excuse me?
Are different structures, different ownership structures.
Exactly.
Why wouldn't they be the same ownership structure?
Because we know we're going to build phase one.
Right, but when you do phase two, why wouldn't you do it with the same ownership structure? Why, why, why complicate it, right? Let's just do it the same way. I thought that's what we talked about before.
If, if there's a way to get there, we'll get there. I, I think that's, we're really now spending far too much time on something. Everyone knows we're going to phase this. We'll figure out a way to, to your satisfaction.
Perfect.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Good with that? Okay.
So we're going to do a different, uh, decision.
And the way that the reverter works as well, we'll work that through you guys as long with council.
Yeah, I mean, look, from, from my perspective at least, I think everybody here will agree with me. We, we spent a tremendous amount of time on the preliminary sketch plan to expedite you know, this conversation and, and the final plaid approval conversation, so.
No, 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 no.
No reason, really no reason to go over old territory, because all the stuff we've talked about.
Just the ma, it's just how we get there.
Good.
But I, I think we're all understanding the phases. So we're also bringing in a plan with, uh, built-in a hundred and twenty-five foot, a hundred and fifty foot, and two hundred and fifty foot setbacks right up front. Uh, so you're here, you're going to have a hundred and twenty-five foot buffer. Uh, I'm going to be quick to add that the buffer of the subdivision to the south, which is the, um, ninety-one Fowler subdivision, which we handle, I think we're going to hear from those, um, those owners with their council, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that before. That has a twenty-five foot buffer on it, twenty-five feet. Well aware of it, because I handle the subdivision and that's all the planning board required.
Okay.
Twenty-five foot buffer. Uh, and there's, if you could, do you have an area? It's long, all the way down to the twenty-five feet. Uh, so we're coming in from a term of a relative, uh, lack of impact on what these things are for. You can see, this is the adjoining subdivision on former Fowler property. It was, it's, it's long down to that twenty-five foot buffer. We're proposing a hundred and twenty-five foot, uh, landscape setback, which means everything's, uh, seaward, as it would call, of that one twenty-five foot buffer will be either, uh, let, let go or, um, it will be, um, an active revegetation. And then two hundred foot setbacks for the wastewater and a hundred and fifty foot for the construction again. Um, it's, it's important to note in terms of people's, uh, if I may bona fides, in terms of objectance that the, uh, subdivision to the south has, not only does have a twenty-five foot buffer, merely a twenty-five foot buffer, but that's, that, this entire subdivision here to the south. here to the south is on five-point-two acres. This is on five-point-two acres. It's a max-yield subdivision. It's a eighty-seven-thousand-square-foot lot and a hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-square-foot lot. So again, that's a max-yield subdivision. We're talking about a sixty-eight percent subdivision. I know the subdivision very well, I, I handled it for the then owners, uh, listed and agreed. Um, that's, that's very important. The lots will have some of their improvements, as do a large number of lots in the village. Essentially, all waterfront and wetland lots will be developed in an A-zone, which is one of the less restrictive zones. Uh, not all of them, one and two are out of the zone, but this is not a problem. One simply needs to comply with the elevation standards in the zone. We've agreed to a notice covenant, which I always sort of scratch my head, notice covenant. You know, you're charged with knowledge of the law, but we'll put a, we'll, we'll put a covenant on there that tells people they'll be building in the, um, in the, um-
That was a requirement of the Suffolk County Planning Board, right?
That was the only requirement.
Yeah, exactly.
That was the only requirement.
Yep.
Uh, there was, there was a, a report, and I wanna tell you this, these are sort of the subculture things that you don't get to see unless you experience them yourself. I sat down at the table at the planning commission, and the chairwoman said to me, "I have some stuff in this report, but don't worry, there's only one condition." And they have to make it a condition.
Yep.
The planning commission has to make something a condition, uh, in order to have, it had to have any weight. Uh, if the planning commission makes something a condition, then if you don't like it, you have to override, override it with a majority plus one.
Right.
That's the only condition in it, and it's a notice covenant. How, how could I have a problem with a notice covenant? You're just telling people that they're, have to obey, obey the law, they have to build according to the elevation requirements, which if you're on the wetlands, or you're on the, on the ocean, or you're on one of the bays in the village of Southampton, or arms of the Oceanic Bay, you're, you're building to the elevation requirements. Let's talk a little bit about SECRE. This is an unlisted action, which unlike a type-two action, there's no legislative finding, a regulatory finding, that it's likely to have a significant impact. What's a subdivision that falls under the type-one list? That's a subdivision of, that's six, C R R N Y six-one-seven-point-four. Where do you, where do you look at a subdivision where there's been a legislative finding or a DEC finding that it's a type-one action, which means it's likely, likely to have a significant environmental impact? Under that section, fifty lots not hooked up to public water or public sewer service. So that's when there's a legislative finding that it's likely to have an insignificant environmental impact. And significant environmental impact is a term of art. People get very, very subjective with that. Oh, it's gonna have a significant environmental impact. Well, you know, it only has to, only has a significant environmental impact if it meets that standard of the law. It's not a subjective thing. So I, 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 I'm gonna talk a little bit about SECRE and process in a bit, but, um, more about it, but I, I think you'd be hard-pressed, I'm just gonna come right out and say that, with a, do anything other than give a negative declaration to such a reduced-density subdivision. Um, I was over in Southold the other day, I have a client that's doing, has a five-hundred-acre parcel, and we're doing, um, about seventy-five lots over there. And one of the staff members said, "Well, what about, the yield is a hundred-and-forty lots." And one of the staff members said, "Well, what, you know, we, we might posdeck this." And both the planner from Southold and council said, looked at them and said, "On a reduced sub, sub-density subdivision like that? Not on your life." Because what you've done is you've taken away the entire incentive for people to come in with such a significantly reduced density. If you're, if you're gonna put somebody through the whole SECRE sausage-making process, they're gonna go back and say, "Okay, we'll do a max-yield, 'cause we're gonna take two years out of my hide, that's what we're gonna do." So in any event, that's something that's always been understood by statute in the, in the, in the town, but understood by custom in the village. Let's look how SECRE has been applied on the adjoining properties. Uh, the Paulsy Lam, Paulsy Family Limited Partnership, which is, if you're, if you're heading down to this property, if you look to the left, to the north, just before you get to the beginning of the subdivision, there's some open space, and then there's some lots to the north, and what people don't realize is that a lot of that open space ain't open space. It's, it's built of lots, it's just the Paulsy family has decided not to build those, build out on those at the time, probably, you know, estate planning. Uh, so that's a, there was a twelve-lot subdivision, received the negative declaration. Uh, right across the pond, a five-lot subdivision, the G R H Family Limited Liability Company subdivision, right across Philip Pond, um, located on the north side of Wicca Pog Road, I'm sorry, located on the south side of Wicca Pog Road, received the negative declaration. I was sort of interested and sort of chuckled a little bit to, for someone to suggest that these are unrelated subdivisions. You are under the line of case law, uh, you know, you, you're supposed to, I mean, things are different on, on, on properties, that's why properties are unique, but we've got a pattern here that's been established that is, is hard to step away from. Uh, and then again, there was a neg-deck on this two-lot max-yield subdivision, which immediately butts the property to the south. So we were the village, uh, even though they were filed on Friday, there were a couple of letters of objection that were filed, and I wanna talk a little bit about those. Um, there was a letter of objection filed by David McMaster, who is representing Arlene Albright, and there was a letter filed by, uh, let me see, where is that? Thank you. By Tiffany Frigente, who is representing this, I guess this property here, which is the waterfront one, it's owned by ninety-one Fowler LLC, I think the principal's a guy by the name of Sider, um, only because I took part in the closing, as well as the subdivision. So what do they say? Um, I didn't see any substantive comments, but there are essentially some procedural arguments. Um, one of the arguments is that we didn't submit, we submitted some amended plans, uh, which were pretty small, small beer items, uh, in response to some comments of the, um, the planning staff, and, uh, it was, we were told that, uh, that didn't meet the fifteen-day lot, time limitation, but that's a, that's a bold misreading of that statute.
Hey, John, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
So, on those procedural arguments-
Right.
-we've reviewed these-
Okay.
-with our council.
Okay.
And we do not think there were any procedural, and correct me if I'm wrong, we do not believe there were any procedural mistakes, so-
Okay, I'll move it along, but I do wanna say one-
You can move this along.
I do wanna say one thing, because I, 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 this is really, and this is really important, if I may, I just, I just wanna make this one procedural statement. Uh, and what I like to do is to be, um, I like to make concessions sometimes, so that even assuming arguendo, the procedural arguments have some merit, let's take them off the table. So this is what I'm suggesting. What they're saying is, I think it's strange, what they're saying in a way is, "You should have made a determination of significance before the public hearing," which always makes me sort of scratch my head, although the, the statute is cloudy, "But you should have made a determination of significance before you scheduled the public hearing." Which to me, if I'm objecting to something, I wanna, I wanna be heard before the SECRE determination. But that's what they're saying. You should have scheduled the public hearing before you made a determination of significance. Okay, fine. Keep the public hearing open, which you were probably gonna do anyway. Rare is the public hearing on a major subdivision that gets closed the first time. Do your SECRE, it's an unlisted action, the coordination is, is not mandatory, but you've gotta help, you only have one other agency, you have the health department. Coordinate with them, they're not gonna take, they're not gonna want lead agency. In forty years, I've never seen them take lead agency. The Office of Ecology, the Health Department, I don't, I, I've never seen them, you know, the, the initiative, uh, land use lawyers will tell you, they never did SECRE, but you have to ask them if they wanna be the lead agency. Send it to them, coordinate with them, declare yourself the lead agent. I think, God willing, you'll see that, and agree with me, that this is, should be issued a negative declaration. Continue the hearing until after the negative declaration, God willing, or however you deal with SECRE, but I think it should be a negative declaration. Keep it open, and then after the negative declaration, people can come back and the public can tell you more about what they think. What that does is that cures the alleged procedural problem here. So again, do your SECRE work, declare yourself, coordinate, health department's not gonna run the, be the lead agent, declare yourself the lead agent, and again, I think that neg-deck is appropriate here, but all the while, keep the hearing open, and then after the negative declaration, you'll have a continued part of the hearing. And that totally evitiates any concern that has been put in both of these letters. I think that the procedural arguments don't have merit, but if you follow my humbly suggested procedure, they go away. And I, I think anything other than that would be sort of beyond cavil by the-
So, John, you'd be happy to know that that is our plan.
Okay.
And that was our plan before.
Thank you.
You coached us.
Then the other, then the other, well, great minds think alike. Then the other thing, um, there was, there was an alleged noticing-
A great argument that we hope is free.
Then there was an alleged deficiency in noticing, and Mr. Sider's, uh, people are telling me that they didn't get notice of the sketch plan hearing. We fought, we fought, we, we do, I've had this argument so many times to the village, I can look at the tax map, I can say, I can look at the code and read who I have to notice, but the village insists that they give me the notice. So, um, just in terms of the bona fides or that, here's the list that- Here's the list that the village, that the village gave us for notification for the sketch plan. And that's what we followed. But be that as it may, oh, and by the way, um, as it relates to Ms., Ms., what's the other objection? What's her name?
Albright.
Albright. Uh, Mr. McMaster was here at the, at the sketch plan hearing, so obviously, he was here, he had his opportunity to represent Ms. Albright. But most important, most important, is this absurd suggestion that somehow that evitiates the sketch plan approval. It does not, it doesn't at all, it doesn't even come close. I hate, I hate, it's just, it's, it's an important point. A matter of Genoa versus Town of Huntington, the notice requirement is not jurisdictional. The failure to give notice does not render the approval void, and the petitioners had the act, in the event that record reveals the petitioners were able to present their views, which is, they're here. And a matter of Petronella, it's another second department case, I'll give these to council. Petitioner's contention, contention that he was denied due processes without merit, attended the hearing, voiced oppositions, and is not prejudiced. So here we are, council for ninety-one Fowler LLC submitted correspondence, they're here, they waived any notice issue, uh, the, the lack of notice, assuming arguendo that that happened, and suing Mr. Sider wasn't aware, uh, which I find interesting, because I was told that he had had conversations with the broker about this whole process, and was very interested. So I don't know whether or not Mr. Sider was or wasn't aware as a matter of, but I, my, my supposition is that he was, uh, but he's here, he's here with, uh, represent, representation who can, I'm sure will be happy to tell you what, what his feeling is on it, Ms. Albright was there. So again, uh, I have no op, no, no objection, or rather, and indeed, I would urge the board to, to hold this per, uh, public hearing open until after, uh, there's been coordination, lead agency, and a SECRE determination. And I, and I, I think that's all pretty fair. And thank you. And we'll work out however that road is gonna work to everyone's satisfaction. I don't wanna become mired down on something where everybody knows it was gonna be staged. We'll, we'll figure it out. Uh, Vince, Bailey, am I forgetting anything? Fowler's, am I forgetting anything? Mr. Epley, am I forgetting anything?
Land a plane.
Excuse me?
Land a plane.
Okay. That's his, that's his diplomatic way of saying, "Oh." Thank you, Mark.
I love you, John.
All right, so, um, Janine, the public hearing's open, correct?
Yes.
Before we take comment, uh, since we've been here for a while, I wanna take a five-minute break, and, um, it's six forty-two, so we will start again at six forty-eight.
Okay.
For public comment now. Mr. Bradman.
Good evening, board members. My name's Jeff Bradman, I represent Raymond Sider. He's the principal and owner of ninety-one Fowler Street, um, and co-counsel is here as well, from the Lynn Gardner Firm, they're gonna speak after me. And ninety-one Fowler is the lot to the southeast and adjacent to, to the applicant's property, which the board may be familiar with. Um, I wanna jump right into the environmental issues, because they sort of set the stage for some of the procedural talk about SECRE, and I was a little afraid I'd bore everybody to death if I just opened up and started talking about SECRE. I do wanna get to it, 'cause it's important to discuss. But, um, you know, this, this, this process started out with the applicant himself submitting a long form EAF Part One, which indicates that a more serious look is required for the property, and if, if you've been to the property, you can see why that's the case. Um, and the Suffolk County Planning Commission was involved because of the nearness of the municipal boundary, so they're an involved agency based on that proximity, and since the Town of Southampton must get a referral, they're, they're an involved agency as well. So there's three involved agencies here. And it suggests, uh, the existence of those three suggests that coordinating review is the most efficient and appropriate, uh, process to follow in this case. And it also gives the board some advantage, some flexibility advantage in taking action on the application. Um, I have to say that the planning commission, it's, it's true, the planning commission, you don't have to override their comments, you have to override their conditions, if you feel like overriding a condition, uh, but it doesn't render their comments irrelevant, as John Bennett has sort of calmly suggested, like, "Oh, it's just, I don't know, it's just, it's just add-ons." Uh, in fact, the planning commission raised some pretty serious red flags about this, uh, about this application, which is quite unusual for the, uh, for the planning commission. Usually, they just send it back and say it's a matter for local determination. You may have seen some decisions like that. And they noted, uh, you know, some deficiencies that, that we were aware of, uh, that are required in your subdivision laws, they noted the absence of dry well locations and a drainage plan for the entire site. And drainage and the accumulation of water on the site, uh, the flow of groundwater, surface water is a very important environmental issue. They also noted that most of the site is in the hundred-year flood plain, which doesn't mean, as you know, that the flood's only gonna happen once in a hundred years. These are, these are, uh, very excessive, forceful flooding, uh, and they can occur many times in a year, and they're increasing in frequency because of climate change. And, uh, your, uh, your, uh, comprehensive plan has some comments about the flood zone too, that I'll get to. Also, the entire site, uh, has class-one soils, highly productive prime soils, very valuable soils, and, um, the, uh, the planning commission recommended a phase-one environmental site assessment, um, of the soils on site, so that we'd know what's there, uh, and that is, I think, a very good idea, given the fact that the pond is adjacent to the property. And as you are probably aware, uh, most of our freshwater ponds on the east end of Long Island are in bad shape, and the village of Southampton knows this, we, they've actually had a water quality improvement, uh, project, um, that puts some, uh, uh, natural vegetation to absorb and deflect the runoff from Wicca Pog, so we know that there already is an issue with runoff, and it's runoff contamination and septic effluent that are the primary causes of nitrates and phosphates that are causing- causes of nitrates and phosphates that are causing these very damaging algae blooms. It was interesting to me to read that the planning commission itself was reminding a village board that the project itself does not align with Village of Southampton comprehensive plan goals that are duly adopted. And those goals are not just statements in the air or opinion, because when you properly apply the SEACRA process in reviewing a material variation between what's proposed and what are officially adopted plans of the village constitute an adverse environmental impact. So the planning commission went out of its way to detail some of the ways in which this project violates the policies enunciated in the comprehensive plan. The plan notes that our rural character is defined by active farming and that extensive subdivision activity has resulted in loss of those active farms. And it actually cites the location of the Fowler property in this vicinity in describing what it calls "a major impact to community character caused by the steady loss of farmland by subdivisions." Again, those are not just comments in the air, they're specific comments that have to be taken into account as you do your secret analysis. And they note, in particular on page 28, that there's still a large area of farms along Fowler Lane, obviously referring to this property, and they even cite as the future use of this property in a later page 92, that it's going to be agricultural use, which of course, this application, if approved, would make impossible and change forever. On page 37, the village advises the public in its formerly adopted plan that the village should discourage subdivisions of this kind, particularly ones that use flag lots, and I agree with the chairman that there is a flag lot in this subdivision. They also recommend, and their, their regulations on a county level prohibit construction within flood plains. So they highlighted that as a violation of another policy that's enunciated in the comprehensive plan. They also noted the importance of looking at lawn maintenance, which is probably what's going to replace farm fields if there is an approval of some sort, and related issues of water usage, chemicals, nitrates, fertilizers, herbicides, fungicides, et cetera, which brings to mind the possibility that this board could require some kind of natural vegetation in lieu of some of these other methods that we've traditionally used to produce our golf green lawns, which are pretty bad influences on the ponds. The comprehensive plan at page 73 cites that freshwater ponds are the unique natural features that make the village of Southampton distinctive from other east end locations, and it cites specifically Phillips Pond as one of those character-creating wetland resources. It also notes that the wetlands adjacent to these ponds are fragile resources which must be protected, and I note that John Bennett repeatedly tells you, oh, well, we're, you know, we're giving you this buffer, we're, we've protected all this land. They're not giving you anything. He's just citing the setbacks that are required in your wetlands law, and I might add that looking at your wetlands law, those are the minimums that are required, and you are, you as the reviewing board are advised to exact the maximum separation that you can from these wetlands because they're so productive. So the flood plains and the adjacent, protecting the adjacent wetlands raises the possibility that you might be able to come up with some further remediation to the impacts that houses would incur. Surface water quality is obviously a big problem. As I said, the village has already had one water quality improvement project to intercept surface water runoff from Wicca Pog, but there may well be natural solutions that this board, using its powers under SEACRA, would want to look at in deciding exactly how these subdivision lots should lay out. And of course, everybody's aware of the dangers of the harmful algae blooms. The village of East Hampton has a harmful algae bloom action plan for Lake Agawam, and concern is real that Phillips Pond is subject to the same kinds of stresses. the county actually also recommended, it stated that its rules were to discourage development in the flood plains, and it also encouraged the thought that environmentally sensitive lands, such as lands that are located in the flood plains and wetlands, should be removed from the lot area that's, that's considered to be developable in these subdivisions. Now, I'm not saying you can change the law about, about how they define lot, lot area in the village of Southampton, but again, it, it might generate some ideas about better mitigating impacts, adjusting building envelopes, for example, adjusting septic envelopes, adjusting buffer setbacks under your code in order to maximize the separation from wetlands. And returning to the, the planning commission's resolution, they encouraged the use of green methodology, which is, you know, can be these rain gardens, or it can be semi-permeable reactive barriers to manage and treat stormwater and water runoff. They also encouraged this board to not wait to look at the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, the SWIP Plan, but to make that a part of your review, which is what SEACRA requires because it doesn't matter whether your town engineer, village engineer is going to approve that separately, and it doesn't matter if Suffolk County Department of Health Services is going to approve the septic systems, you as the lead agency still have the obligation to review all aspects of this plan. So you get to look at those, and it's important that you do that. The county also mentions that the board should pay attention to solar layout for energy efficiency, which we're all, we're all concerned about. And it had some recommendations that were also substantive. It strenuously urged that this property be developed with a cluster subdivision, which I know was enacted and exempt, was exempted when it was enacted. But the, that does not mean that you can't make other adjustments to this plan based on the possible, the possible existence of significant adverse impacts for, and, you know, I want to make a comment about the, the importance that John Bennett gives to the, to the yield plan, and, you know, and how much they've given back because they're, they're not building out to the full yield. The fact of the matter is that the, the description of a yield plan as an as-of-right plan, you always hear the developers call a yield plan the as-of-right plan. It's not an as-of-right plan. Nothing is as-of-right under zoning and planning board review because everything has to pass through the, the filter of SEACRA. And what, what a yield plan is, basically, it meets, it's a plan in which lot lines, roads, accesses, meet the, you know, the numerical requirements of zoning, the dimensional requirements of zoning. That's all it is. It's what can you do fitting all the setbacks in? And I can tell you from my experience in a town that underwent a real intensive development of subdivisions, East Hampton in the 1980s, when I was zoning board attorney, and developers very quickly learned that fewer, larger lots were more remunerative than building a whole mass of smaller lots. So this idea that giving up a 12-lot yield was an act of generosity and deserves recognition, I think, is a little bit overstated. As I said, the county planning commission states as its own policy that they do not want to see development in the hundred-year flood plain. The planning board will have an opportunity to look at these lots more carefully as you embark on the SEACRA process, and it's possible that you could adjust building envelopes and try to make some adjustments acknowledging the fact that these are flood-prone lots. Likewise, wetland protection. Another issue that you're going to have to deal with is an access easement to the pond. The pond is owned by the village, and frankly, the board has the right and has, in the past, required easements for maintenance and inspection. The town, I'm sorry, the village is going to be in a position where it can monitor compliance with its own approvals if we get an approval out of this, and giving them access for that purpose is legal and permissible, and you've done it before. The Phase One site assessment is a great idea and also should extend to the other fields that are cultivated to the south of the pond because you're going to, you're going to learn, I think, as we get into some of these issues, that groundwater flow and surface water flow are affecting the quality of, the water quality in Phillips Pond. We think the flag lot should be eliminated. I understand, I've heard Mr. Bennett say several times, it's 40 feet wide where it meets the road, but if you read the definition of a flag lot, it's, it's got a skinny little flag and a larger flag portion. It meets the definition in the code, as far, as far as I can see. And, and your comprehensive plan is, rather, your subdivision plan is very clear that flag lots are not permitted on properties that have been re-subdivided. This is a property that's had several re-subdivisions. And the septic systems also have setbacks, but that doesn't mean that this board can't adjust them to get them further away from the pond. I've mentioned green methodologies, and don't need to say more about that. I, I think one thing that hasn't been discussed very much is that the lot area of the agricultural reserve that's proposed is a little skimpy, frankly. It's, you know, they picked the one lot that's got all the structures on it, and there are enough structures and a house on it, I might add, that serve nearly a 28-acre lot. And from just eyeballing it, it looks like the structures occupy about two-thirds of the lot. So the only, and an agricultural reserve is supposed to be property that can remain available for agriculture, even if it's not actually cultivated. It doesn't seem like their, like their calculation of it constituting 25% is accurate. That's something I think the board should revisit and look at carefully to see if it really, if there really is an effort here to make anything that will last as, as potentially farmable field. It doesn't, doesn't really look that way, and with the house on it, I wonder if eventually every lot in this subdivision could become a single-family residence with this one having a large backyard. It might have, it might have an easement on it, but it could very well turn out to be just another house lot. And it certainly looks like they didn't pick the lot, they didn't pick an area of the property that, in a location and a configuration where it's likely to even be, you know, to be planted or used in any way for agriculture. And I think that's something that you can look at using the goals of your comprehensive plan as a guide. I want to talk about SEACRA for a minute. I'm happy to hear the board talking about coordinating review. I want to, I want to strongly urge you to coordinate view. You've got the town of Southampton as an involved party, you've got the county planning commission, which gave a very unusually strenuous memo about this, and you've got the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. There's an advantage to the board. I know, you know, John Bennett has repeatedly said, well, when, you know, when you, when you issue your negative declaration and he's, you know, everything's going to be fine and dandy. But the fact of the matter is, if you have a coordinated review, it, it gives you an opportunity to have a little bit more control because you no longer are facing the, the decision choice that Mr. Bennett seems to be suggesting, that it's either a negative declaration or, oh my God, it's going to be an environmental impact statement, which nobody wants to do. But the fact of the matter is, if you, if you have coordinated review, you open up the possibility that you can use a conditional negative declaration. And additional, a conditional negative declaration gives you an opportunity for a slightly broader environmental review of unlisted actions, which might otherwise have to have either been issued a negative declaration or an environmental impact statement. What it means, a conditional negative declaration just means that when and if you see a potential significant adverse impact, you don't, you can tailor a, your negative, your conditional declaration, your conditional negative declaration can have conditions and mitigation in it, which gives you some breathing room where you can better control what you want to approve if you want to, if you decide that that's the direction you're going in. You know, John is very good at sort of telling you why it's impossible that you're going to see a potentially significant adverse impact on the site because if you look at the Type I list, it has, you know, 52, 52 apartments. That's, that's really not correct. The difference, the difference between a Type I action and an unlisted action really is in, is it's in the burden of proof, what you do with the facts. It, it doesn't mean that a Type I action, you can have significant adverse impacts, but you can't have that in, in an unlisted action. No, you can have them in both, but the difference is in how the law, what the law requires you to do to treat what you see as a potentially significant adverse impact. If it's a Type I action, the law presumes that it will have significant adverse impacts, and if there may be an impact, there must be an environmental impact statement. That's because there, this Type I action is considered more dangerous to the environment. It, that does not mean that in looking at this unlisted action, you're not, you're never going to see a potentially significant adverse impact. Doesn't mean that at all. All, the, the difference is in what can be done with it. And in, and in an unlisted action, if you coordinate your review, which I strongly suggest that you do, then you have the option of this middle, middle kind of process where you can put conditions on it. You don't just have to say, everything's okay, you know, there are no environmental impacts. So if you see a potential significant environmental impact to Phillips Pond, which I suggest you are going to see, you don't have to, you're not caught in a bind where you have to say, oh, well, you know, we don't want to make them do an environmental impact statement. You can come up with conditions that mitigate and conditions that remove the danger there. So it's something to consider and, and incidentally, it's not, it's not a particularly difficult process to coordinate review. All it requires is that this board, through the administrative offices, sends the application and the EAF Part One to the three other boards with your statement that you want to be the lead agency. That's all it is. Once you do that, and you've, you've coordinated review, then you can, then you get the benefit of being able to do a conditioned negative declaration. So I wanted to also say to you that I brought with me tonight some correspondence just to open the door to the issues of the pond. We've retained Dr. Gobler, Chris Gobler, whom I know you've met before.
He's spoken more than I have. Yeah, the three-minute rule is published in your agenda, three minutes, and he's spoken more, longer than I have, and the rest is supposed to be in writing, and now he's talking about putting stuff in from Gobler. And now he's talking about putting stuff in from Gobler, who hasn't ever seen a subdivision that he doesn't hate.
Mr. Chairman?
Just time, yeah, hang on a second.
Publish three-minute rule, and I've sat here and said nothing.
This is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Well, how much longer do you think?
I'm going to finish up pretty, I'm pretty much at the end. And I appreciate your time. You know, John Bennett said-
Just timeout. As I understand it, we have a three-minute rule that's published, but at the chair's discretion, we can extend that. So I'm going to let you go.
I appreciate that. I'll be considerate of your time. I'm nearing the end of my presentation, and I don't want to make John too nervous, so keep it short.
Stop referring to him by name. Stop forgetting comments.
John.
Do it all the time.
Please. You know I have zero tolerance. Timeout, please. You know I have zero tolerance, okay?
I just want to say-
For comments when you don't have the mic, so please, keep quiet, okay? Please continue, Mr. Bragman.
This is more in the way of a memo that raises issues and questions of information that will be helpful in assessing what's going on in Phillips Pond. It's not a definitive report on Phillips Pond. We didn't know what you were going to do tonight, so I guess it goes over here to Mr. Paul.
What is this?
I have some other comments to make about the process, but I've made the most important ones regarding the conditional negative and coordinating review. There are some rules on the decision-making process, how you do it. There's like a formula, and it's very orderly, and it provides a very good framework for your discussions going forward, but I think it can wait till the next meeting, and maybe I won't take up more time now to discuss it. I think that's about what I have to say, and just ask you to take a few more minutes to listen to co-counsel from the Lynn Gardner firm on behalf of the same client. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman London and fellow board members. My name's Tiffany Fregenti. You received my correspondence last week. I'll try to be brief and cognizant of the three-minute rule. I am co-counsel with Mr. Bragman. I represent 91 Fowler LLC, the owner of the real property located at 91 Fowler Street. I don't want to belabor the point about notice. I understand that the village attorney reviewed my letter, but I do want to put it on the record that unfortunately, my client only became aware of this proposed subdivision upon receiving notice of today's hearing about two weeks ago. Even in this short amount of time, we reviewed the documentation submitted in support of the application, and while we can appreciate, you know, the lengthy efforts of the board and Mr. Bennett in getting to this point, we have grave concerns with the application and its compliance with certain points that were pointed out in the village planning memo of H2M, and there are still significant deficiencies. And in addition to the failure to meet notice requirements, we believe that these need to be cured before this can proceed anymore. For a few reasons that I'll discuss in a minute, the board should decline to accept this preliminary plat application, and the applicant should be required to resubmit a proper sketch plan in a manner that complies with the code and the comprehensive plan. But at the very least, this should be adjourned to give everyone proper and appropriate time to review the application and consider the undeniable environmental impacts. As I mentioned, 91 Fowler LLC was only recently notified of this subdivision. My client did not receive notice of the sketch plan application for the initial planning board hearing. I reviewed what was submitted in the Dropbox, and it does not appear that they were served with any notice. I understand that Mr. Bennett is familiar with Mr. Spider and the property, but nevertheless, he was not served with notice. And even at this stage, we're discussing whether there's going to be public roads or easements or rights of way, and there should have been a full and fair opportunity for him to voice his concerns at that hearing on the sketch plan. And unfortunately, because of no notice, he was not able to do that. I think this is a critical misstep, particularly here, where there's been concerns about preservation of this area since the sketch plan phase. I know, Mr. McFarland, you pointed out some of those concerns, and, you know, this should have been something that he was given notice of, and I'm not sure how that fell through the cracks, but there's an opportunity here to stop this process and, you know, go back to the drawing board. The sketch plan that was submitted and the plan that was most recently submitted are different. There's another flag lot, and there's issues that were raised by Suffolk County that need to be addressed. In addition to the SECRE concerns that my co-counsel raised, there are other issues that were flagged by the village consultant, H2M, which remain unresolved to this day. And I'll point out two of those deficiencies, but the first is an easement for village access to Phillips Pond, and the second is some sort of covenant and restriction or easement for the agricultural reserve. As to the access to Phillips Pond, this board has long pointed out that the pond is owned by an entity of the village, and-
Can I interrupt you there? Just for the record, the pond is owned by the F and C trustees, not the village, okay?
Thank you for the clarification. But in any event, it would require an easement for monitoring, as was done with other ponds in Southampton Village. So there should be some sort of easement access to the pond to give that entity the ability to monitor it. This was done for Pheasant Pond, Duck Pond. It's been requested by this board, and to the extent the applicant has drafted such language, it's missing, and it's not included in the plan and/or in the application, and the board should require that and that it be provided for public review and comment. And the same applies to the agricultural reserve. It's been raised by this board, Suffolk County, the village consultant. Although it's being designated by this subdivision as an agricultural reserve, nothing prevents a future owner from developing the reserve for other uses, and the board should require that the applicant address this issue. And now is the time that it should be addressed. And they shouldn't be permitted to move forward any longer while ignoring the concerns that have been raised time and time again by this board, by the consultant, by Suffolk County. You know, Chairman London, as you eloquently stated earlier, this planning board is one that, you know, dots your i's, crosses your t's, and you like to make informed decisions, and we need more information and we need compliance with things that have been raised by various other entities and your own consultant before any further action be taken with respect to this application. And I'll end there, but I appreciate the board's time and consideration.
Couple of questions. So you're representing 91 LLC, and, Mr. Bragman, you're representing the same-
Same, we're co-counselors.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is David McMaster, and I represent Irene Albright, who is the owner of 534 Wickapog Road, an adjacent property. As already been stated, the Planning Board has an obligation to take a hard look at the potential impacts that this major subdivision will cause. Now, because I was here during the sketch plan review process, I'm concerned that this board is rushing through the process and is potentially abdicating its obligations, which include hearing from impacted community members to better inform your decision-making. So I'm glad to hear that the board is inclined to leave the public hearing open for additional comment. My client is a firm believer in the sanctity of private property and the Fowler's rights to make choices regarding their land. However, my client opposes the proposed major subdivision in its current ill-conceived form. If approved, 20 acres of rare active farmland will be lost to new development, wrecking havoc on the sensitive Phillips Pond environment and increasing congestion in the area. The view shed from my client's home and along Phillips Pond will be destroyed. Property values for all the neighboring properties will also be diminished. Now, a memo prepared by H2M points out the application as missing information about two fundamental issues: restrictions of use in the proposed agricultural reserve and the easement agreement referenced on the reserve parcel. These issues are of great concern to my client, whose adjacent property is directly impacted by them. So I'd like to remind the board that as of today, there's no inventory of the existing building and structures located in the proposed agricultural reserve, no inquiry whether they are actually used for, quote, "agricultural production." Currently, it appears that the future ag reserve area is rented to a large corporation, so it's unclear if it's actually being used for agricultural production. As a former municipal prosecutor in a town attorney's office, I can tell you that declining to take a hard look at what's going on there now will make any future enforcement actions for land use that the village wants to do incredibly more difficult. So I would just say it's imperative that the board drill down on what's actually going on, on the ag reserve. Now, as for the easement agreement referenced on the reserve parcel, my client's property is the beneficiary of this easement agreement, and I'm familiar with the, with its terms. In my reading of the easement agreement, they're prohibited from encumbering the easement area with any additional restrictions on its usage. So that would include being placed in an agricultural reserve area. I would submit that the proposed ag reserve area cannot include the easement area as per the terms of the easement. And I also agree with H2M that the layout presented in the preliminary subdivision plan is inconsistent with the requirements of the village code, as well as the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which clearly state that a major issue has been the steady loss of open rural sense of the village's landscape and farms, and large lots have been subdivided into residential communities. The farmland is typically replaced with houses on standard large lots. In general, the village should discourage subdivisions, particularly when resulting parcels would result in the creation of flag lots. So as the speakers before me have said, I think that the board should move to require the applicant to eliminate the flag lot, Lot 7, and with respect to the other lots, use its jurisdiction under SECRE to push the building envelope further back from Phillips Pond. And while the county planning commission, where the recommendations are non-binding, I agree that they're very compelling and that the board should follow them. So thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Mark Epley, 158 Harvest Lane, Southampton. I, you know, we talk about this project only a couple, for a couple of years. So when I served as the mayor, I was first elected in 2005, and in 2007, Rick Fowler came to talk to me about this property and subdividing, not this Rick Fowler, but his father. And two years later, his father passed away. Rick Fowler passed away. So the responsibility of a family fell on the shoulders of a young man right here. I have the privilege of calling him my son-in-law. In 2018, married my daughter, so he's my son now. And so this is important to me. And, you know, when we talk about this, I find it comical that an attorney for a property owner comes in here and talks about the environmental impact of 125-foot setback to Phillips Pond when his client has a setback of 25 feet. He mows all the way down there. He has structures on there, aren't structures on there. And they want to come in here and talk about the environmental impact of this subdivision on Phillips Pond. It's comical to me. It's classic, "I crossed the bridge here, Schenectady Canal, now let's take it up. Nobody else can come here." Well, the Fowlers have owned this property since 1678, when they received the land grant Christopher Fowler did, to own this property here. My son-in-law is the oldest living Fowler male in that line. I have three grandchildren, I have three children. They're mine. They're part of that line. This is family planning. They own property all over the place. They own property across the street in the town of Southampton. This is planning that his father started, and his grandfather started, and his great-grandfather started in this area. Part of this is because of our tax structure at the United States level when it comes to inheritance and stuff, okay? That's the reality, okay? They want to farm this land. They farm the land across the street. They farm the land here. They have barns there that are used for agriculture. They have tractors in there. They have all sorts of farming equipment. They're farmers. That's what they do. Okay? So I just find it very comical that people come in and they buy. The house at 91 is there because of two-acre zoning. It was five acres, it was up for sale for five acres because they thought at the time it was three-acre zoning. I said to Midge, "It's not three-acre zoning, it's two-acre zoning, your property's subdivisible." So that property owner at 91 is there because I found it was two-acre zoning. It's got a 25-foot buffer. Okay? So it's, so what I'm asking, and I know it's, I know what you guys are doing, I know the time that you spent, the two years that you spent working on this. I know it's been another year that you've been working on this, and I appreciate that the Fowler family does. It's hard. Anytime you run up against something like this, it's hard. It's a very difficult process. But I appreciate you guys looking at this, taking the time, dotting your i's and crossing your t's because it's very important, so. But I just want you to recognize the history associated with this, the Fowler family, the impact that they've had on this community for centuries, the volunteer work that, he's a fire chief in the village, he was an ambulance chief in the village, he's the one who was responsible for building the new ambulance barn. Everybody in this room has been impacted by his volunteer work. His father was a volunteer, his grandfather was a volunteer. Fowler's beach was donated to the village by the Fowler family. The Conic Land Trust donation of 800-plus feet of space along the ocean by the Fowler family. You know, there's, there's a land right at the end of, on Wickapog, that was a trail that goes down to a pond that was named after his grandfather. You know, this is, it's been a long, drawn-out process, and I appreciate your time and effort on this, so thank you, guys.
Anyone else on this? Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We're going to leave the public hearing open. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. And I think this application has been a little unusual in its approach historically in that we spent so much time on the preliminary sketch plan. And the idea behind doing that and doing it a little bit differently was to have the tough conversation upfront. And I think that after a long time of tough conversations and some hotly negotiated topics, we came down to several key points. That the view of the Planning Board, as far as I know, and correct me if anyone disagrees with this, was the Planning Board, to move this forward along, right, needed an easement to access the pond somehow, and we all agreed that we were going to figure that out as a team, right? We're both going to work because that's important. And all the associated environmental, you know, issues surrounded with the necessity in the future to potentially have to address the pond, that's number one. The- The structure of that reserve, right, and there is a draft, Mr. Bennett draft of that easement in the file, but that's Mr. Bennett's cut at it, and there really hasn't been any detailed discussion of that. We were saving that to this phase and the final plat approval. The entrance or entrances and how those are going to be dealt with. There's that westernmost entrance, just as you come into that curve on Wickapog as you're going east. There's the next one, a little bit further down, next to the house, and then there's one around the corner. And there's been some discussion on that, how we're going to handle that. And then, part of that discussion, because there were some safety issues there with that westernmost entrance, but that was all part of the discussion of, you know, what's that going to look like between the barn and Wickapog Road? And how can we clean that up and make that look nice, et cetera, et cetera? And as far as I recall, those are kind of the key things that we needed to, you know, further discussion on as this application moves through the planning board process. The things that I recall as having been heavily negotiated but agreed upon was the location of that reserve, the number of lots, how you're going to access those lots, and the size of those lots, right? And this is at a very high level. Obviously, we didn't get into the gory details of, you know, specifics of that because it was a preliminary sketch plan, right? But I, I think that at a high level, that stuff is locked in, right? And there's no appetite, either the chair or any of the planning board members that had mentioned it to me, to reopen that as we move through this process. So, I want to kind of, I take the time to summarize those things so everyone knows that's here, right? You know, what we'll consider and, you know, what, what ships have already sailed, if you will. Anyone take issue with that? All right. Sorry, Amanda. There was, the one thing that I know is one of Amanda's points, or it's not, I don't want to pin this entirely on you, but was what that looks like as you go down Fowler, whether you can see in or not, right? And that, that's on the table as well, but I don't view that, you know, I think that's just a discussion. I don't view that as structural necessarily, the way the location of the reserve and the entrances, et cetera, et cetera, is. So, you know, I frame this, right, so that if anyone has a different view on the board, they can bring it up now, right? So, I don't like surprises. I don't like surprises as things move down to, you know, to, you know, as we go to the next steps here. Hang on one second. So, that if anyone has a different view of the history here or we agree to, you need to raise your hand now. John, are you raising your hand?
No, I was just going to say that you, I think you've accurately defined and localized what's left and that the sketch plan process, even though it was elongated, did what it was supposed to do. And as primary, you know, it got to the number of lots. You didn't like, we came in with 12. We had 12, came in with 10, didn't like that. So, there was a lot of discussion about that. And I think obviously you have to, you're required to keep an open mind about all this stuff, but I think there was an awful lot of, a lot of pain and negotiation about that. And it was open for everyone to see.
Yeah.
It was on all the videos after, before and after the public hearings on the sketch plan. But I would, I, I, that's, I would agree with how you, you know, crystallize everything. And those issues are going to be, are going to be dealt with.
Alex, didn't we, didn't the planning board declare lead agency status on this, or we have not done that formally yet?
I don't believe that's been formally done.
And the appropriate time to do that would be when we close this hearing, or?
No, 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 no. Let me, let me do this, please. Please. This is what you have to do, because I've been doing this forever. This is what you have to do. The objectants are saying that you shouldn't have had a public hearing until you reach the determination under secret.
I understand that.
So, please let me finish, because this is really critical, because I, I want to, in effect, defang that procedural problem.
Let me interrupt you, because I think we agree, we agree on this one. I don't, and I want to say for the record, I don't agree with the procedural objections here. We've checked with our council. They agree with that. I believe the notices were sent. I myself saw the posted notices for the preliminary. Went down there myself and checked to make sure they were posted. So, as far as I'm concerned, right, the notices are out there. Now, whether your client received them or not, they were, as far as we've been able to determine, they were sent. And there was also that posted notice that was up there, because we double-checked, personally double-checked on this one. So, I don't.
No, I wanted to say something else, but I appreciate that. What I'm trying to say is, that's a notice issue. But what, what the objectants are complaining about is another issue. What they're saying, and it's, it's a poorly, it's a poorly drafted statute because it was drafted by, you know, it's all, these seeker subdivision regulations are made for upstate New York, too, where you don't have staff and planning, and sometimes people get things done the wrong way. But their objection is that you shouldn't have had a public hearing until you had a determination of significance, either a negative declaration or a positive declaration. And if you had a positive declaration, then you combine this preliminary hearing with the seeker hearing. That, I find it strange, because you would think, as somebody who wants to be heard, that they would want to have a public hearing before the board came to either a positive, negative declaration. But be that as it may, I'm begging you to follow my proposed procedure, because that will remove, this will remove that objection. What I'm suggesting is that you keep this hearing open. You coordinate under seeker, and by the way, the planning commission and the, the planning commission and the town of Southampton are not involved agencies. They have nothing to do with coordination. There's one other, there's interest, interested agency, the two interested agencies here. This board and the, and the Bureau of Waste Water Management, the Department of Health, okay? Coordinate, declare yourself lead agency. I think that the negative declaration is the appropriate. Issue a negative declaration, and after that's done, you have this continued hearing. So, that, they're, they're saying you shouldn't have scheduled the public hearing until you had a negative declaration, which I think is. So, fine. Have the negative declaration. Do the seeker work, then have the continued public hearing for one hearing after that. That, that totally does away with their procedural objection. Whether or not you agree with their procedural objection, I want to remove it, because I don't want to give somebody, somebody something to litigate.
Understood. Lisa?
Yeah, just as far as seekers concerned, I think that since we're going to, it's unlisted, the coordinated review's optional. We're opting to coordinate the review. So, I think it would be appropriate at this time to issue a notice of intent to serve as lead agency and coordinate the review. I think it is valid to include the interested, as well as the involved agencies, because part of the reason we do that is so that if they have insight that's valuable, we can take it, and it helps contribute to the idea that we've taken the hard look that the board is required to take in looking at all environmental impacts. I think the board also should consider the, because even though we didn't yet coordinate the review, this, the planning commission has issued comments. Some of them are seeker-related and including, you know, the Phase 1 ESA request and, and other environmental concerns. And they should just be part of the considerations the planning board thinks of as we, as we approach the seeker issue and begin the analysis for, you know, that, that's anticipated once, you know, once we conclude the coordinated review.
Right. The intent, so, thank you. So, to declare our intention, is that a resolution or?
Yeah, I would suggest that you make a motion classifying it as an unlisted action and seeking intent to serve as lead agency unless counsel.
Yes, correct. Yes, make a resolution, state your purpose.
So, in that?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, please.
That we get counsel to petition, as, as the water authority, as I call them, to allow us to become lead, lead, lead agent on this application as promptly as possible.
And to coordinate.
And to coordinate for the seeker review. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Yep. Okay.
And it is, because we got this opinion coming from them written out, it was exhaustive, as you read and everything else. I think we all read it in some detail, maybe more than others. There was not an issue that we had not discussed at some length already in the protracted period this has taken place. So, this, we have to review stuff. Nothing was new that we hadn't pondered at great length. We had counsel for the applicant, go to great heights over Pond Access. We've done everything. We're coming back to wrapping it up, as the chairman said, but we will do it again.
So, then I would ask, thank you for doing that. I would ask that you have a resolution to keep the hearing open until such time as you've, hopefully, after you've declared yourself lead agency, issued a negative declaration, but you've taken the next action that's required under seeker, and then have a continued public hearing for at least one date after that, after your seeker.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that does away with the procedural problem.
Yeah, I don't think I need a resolution to, to leave the hearing open, do I? I think I, as chair, you could.
I think just declare it.
Yeah, just declare, yeah, I can declare the meeting open. In order to clarify that, though, because I want to make sure that anybody who wants to be here for these meetings can listen, because it's a hearing. If we have a special meeting for the shippies people, can we just do shippies at that? Or do we have to, would Fowler be on an agenda for that special meeting?
Well, if you want to make a motion, say, to adjourn this, keeping it open to May 5th, then that, that's the date that it would be adjourned to, even if the board had a work session in between.
Yeah, does that work for you?
Or you could adjourn it further, because that won't be enough time for the seeker coordination.
It will if the county decides that they send you, you have, the county has 30 days to decide. I've seen the county send it right back, so, yeah. You should keep it on the May 5th for control.
Let's keep it on May 5th. If it doesn't happen, we can just continue, we can adjourn it to the meeting after that.
Well, that way you have a date certain.
Yeah, so we have a date certain, so people that want to be here can be here and know that the next time we're going to talk about this is May 5th, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay?
Thank you.
Good. Okay.
I'd like to add for the record, since this is recorded, that the review that I referenced included much of what the former mayor talked about with the history of the family, a history of their efforts at estate planning. A great deal has been done, not formally, not of record, but we've been extensive in our investigation of all the issues that are involved with family planning, with generations. We still haven't got a major issue. Everybody knows we have to deal with the terms of what's reserved. The village doesn't have all the spectrum of establishment of what the town does and the state and everything else about an agricultural reserve. The village is brand-new, and there are not many farms left in the village. But we're, we're going to have to resolve that issue. We all know that. We've discussed it many times. But the history of the family and what they intend to do is well-known to us, and we've talked about it many times.
Thank you.
So, was there a motion to continue the hearing on May 5th?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request from co-counsel.
We, we can't record your comments on the minutes unless you're at a microphone, so you need to be recognized by the chair.
Co-counsel has a conflict on that day. Can we, can you bump it back a week?
You want to, you want to bump it to?
Like one week.
It's two weeks.
It's two weeks, the 19th.
Yeah, hang on a, hang on a second. I think you need to work on this, all right? Here, let me land, all right? As you heard earlier, this has been going on for ages, right? And I, I think the trustees have directed us, and we all agree that people that have applications pending before the planning board deserve these, deserve these applications to be moved on as quickly as we can. And to stall that because you can't make it, I have an issue with, right? So.
Respectfully, Chairman, I understand, and I'm not looking to delay anything any further. Any other week would be, I will happily make it work, change things around. I'm going to be out of the country. We just got notice of this. I made it here today, got my letter in, voicing my objections. Again, not looking to delay, just as a professional courtesy, I would just appreciate if May 5th could, could be adjourned. I understand there's been a lot of effort. This is two years underway, again, but another two weeks, I don't think it's going to kill anyone, and I, I just would really appreciate it if, you know, we could put it on for the next date. That would allow sufficient time for everyone to coordinate review, do whatever diligence needs to be done on our end as well. It's a tight timeframe, and I think that another two weeks would actually benefit everyone to get resolution on, on some of these issues. Maybe we could explore other resolution and perhaps, you know.
Yeah, I understand you're not going to be here, but May 5th is almost a month away, right? So, to delay this six weeks when I don't think we necessarily.
You can do it the week before.
Happy to hear on this, I, I had a major subdivision in the town of Southampton one time, and I flew three days later to meet my family and friends, because that's how important it was. So, if it's important, and, and this, send somebody else from the firm, do it all the time, that's, that's an absurd request.
Yeah. Any other views on the board on this?
I don't see changing the date.
Can we move it up a week? I'm happy to.
No, our, our planning board meets on specific dates each month, and.
I mean, a special meeting you could do.
So, we're willing to do special meetings, because, you know, everyone isn't a year-round resident on the board. Some people actually travel from a long distance to get here to these meetings. So, having a set agenda is important. You know, again, the shippies, we're willing to make a.
What is the date of the shippies special meeting?
We have, it's, we don't know yet.
Perhaps you could just put them on together.
It may not occur. You know, for now, I'm going to leave this on May 5th. We're still waiting to see if we get what we need from the health department, right? Aren't we waiting for something? Didn't you mention?
For shippies?
No, for this one.
For this one? Well, the, I, I think, well, we have to do the coordinated review. So, that, in theory, they have 30 days, but John's right, that sometimes they will just write back, "We have no objection," in which case the coordinated review concludes, because we only have to really coordinate with them, that one agency. But, and other than that, we do need the plans to reflect what, I, I don't think you want to close a hearing until the plans have addressed the issues that you've raised and you're waiting on them to address.
Yeah, I'm going to do it on the 5th, and, and we'll revisit that behind the scenes based on whether they want a coordinated review or they decline. You know, they just say, "Not, not our problem."
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but, you know, we just cannot hold this up for one person any longer.
Should we put a written comment?
Pardon?
Should we consider that written comment?
Yeah, you can always submit written comments as well, but that's fair.
So, is there a motion?
We need a motion for, to hold this open to May 5th, correct? A second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Anna. All in favor?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, great, thank you. John, are you doing Connemara tonight? Or Connemara's on, Connemara, is that, that's on our agenda for tonight? Are you, you're going to do that?
That's fine. Is it next?
You're next.
Yep. So, that concludes public hearings, and now we're on work session.
Yeah, sorry, that concludes our public, thank you, Alex. That concludes our public hearing. We're going to move on to work session. Which one?
John, I think you're going to face that towards you for the cameras. John, I think you're going to face that towards you for the cameras. They switched it at one point. I think it's always towards you now, yeah.
As soon as you get used to it, they're going to change it again.
Yeah.
Conamara.
Yes, thank you. Sometimes when I see the name, I wish I wasn't Conamara. Wonderful area. This is Debbie Hirst's house on First Neck Lane. The property currently has 40,000 square feet. Then we want to transfer 26,277 square feet to her house property, taking it from a three-acre, more or less, lot that she owns to the east, and of course, the flag is to the south. So we had to go to the zoning board of appeals, because even though this lot two is in excess of 120,000 square feet, so it's, since it's a flag lot, you have to have more than 120,000 square feet. So we went to the zoning board, but in transferring this property, this 26,000 square feet to this acre property, which is in a three-acre zone, you're greatly reducing, well, you're significantly reducing the degree of nonconformity of the existing house lot. So this should bring the lot area of 52 First Neck Lane down to 129,380 square feet, and 50 First Neck Lane would become more conforming with 66,280 square feet. Nelson Pope thought we needed to go to the zoning board of appeals, there was some sort of hyper-technical arguments that would go either way, but we just decided to go there, and on March 27th, I appeared before the ZBA for the relief, and the ZBA granted the relief without really much discussion. They have this new procedure where if there's really not an issue, they do something called a, what's the name of it?
Short form.
A short form decision. And when do they do that? They do that when there's no opposition, and they're going to grant it, so they don't think anyone's going to bring an action on it. So they just do a short form. So this is now, in effect, where's that case? Where's that case? This is, I think I put it in my pocket, because I was, I was doing some last-minute. Dale and I were doing some last-minute research on this. Once the zoning board of appeals grants the relief, that essentially becomes the zoning for the area. That's Thurman versus Hallahan and Pavone versus Planning Board, which I'll, we can send copies of this to council. So this, it's, once the ZBA has granted the relief, there are no effective nonconformities. Prior to, I'll just read, prior to seeking formal approval for the preliminary subdivision, petitioners are paying to approve from the ZBA. I'm reading from Pavone versus Planning Board. Therefore, the lots with the approved variances were conforming when they appeared on the subdivision map. So that has an effect, become the zoning for the area once the ZBA granted the relief. I don't think there are any issues here. No density is being created. You have two lots before, you have two lots after. This first-neck lane lot, well, they were first-neck lane lots, but this lot number one becomes much more conforming. So it's a good thing. And this is sort of a strange-looking lot in terms of what you do here, so it makes more sense just to have the main portion of the lot in a rectangular shape. That's all there is to it.
This is R120, this area.
The whole property's R120.
Lot, I can't read that writing.
What do you want me to read?
Well, lot two is, how many, today, before, before the ZBA decision was.
Before the ZBA, it's 155,657 square feet.
Minus the flag.
No, that's with the flag, isn't it? Yeah, okay, here we go. Area including, yeah, that's, that's the existing configuration. It's lot, it's 155,657. Yeah, and then you have to take the flag.
And how, how much does the flag take out?
It makes exactly 120.
What was it?
120?
150.
Makes exactly.
Not, not 150,000.
No, the flag's more than 5,000 square feet. It's got to be.
When you take out from this existing lot of 156, when you take out this flagpole portion to here.
Yeah.
This portion of the lot is actually 150,000 square feet exactly.
So when, when John says it's 150, what'd you say, 156 today? That includes from the, from first neck?
Through the entire lot.
Through the entire lot?
Yep.
And when we take out that rectangle?
It was 150 even.
But now.
It's going to be 129,380, when you take out the flag. It'll be exactly 120.
Exactly 120.
Got it, okay.
For, so we were able to say, though, even if it doesn't conform to the flag lot requirements, it conforms, it's a, it conforms to the R120 zoning.
Yeah, and how, how wide is the flagpole there?
24 feet. 24.75, the course is right there, or the, the distance, I should say.
And how is that landscaped today?
Oh, it's, it's, this lot isn't in use.
So it's not landscaped? Okay.
Debbie wanted to avoid the deer.
Oh, she put a, yeah, that's right.
If the, if the garden goes in, the pond lane. Okay, that's what she told me.
Yeah.
And how's that gonna, how's that gonna?
She can fence off her property and not have the deer come in from the garden.
It says, it says.
Separating.
Beautiful garden back there.
Which is not, which is currently on.
On the, on the large lot.
It's on the large lot.
Yeah.
What is lot one?
Uh, lot two.
Lot two.
Yeah, sorry. Gets confusing.
Okay, any, any questions?
No.
I vote, I vote.
Any, down, at this end, any questions on this one?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion to approve, all in favor?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Just, you know, I still have to go to the, the ZBA approved it? Thank you for approving it, I still have to, I think the Health Department has to approve it.
Yeah, has the, have we seen the ZBA opinion? Have they written a memo on this?
I think we're still waiting for that short-form decision to get signed by the chair.
That's, that's true, yeah.
And the short form, it just.
It's basically a written decision, but it's one that's prepared by council and signed by the chair. It doesn't have to go through a second board meeting for review.
Okay.
There was affirmative vote to do it, yeah.
March 27th. March 27th.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, March 27th.
Okay. All right, 54 North Main. I'm going to step out, because I'm recused on this one.
Oh, we forgot about that.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's facing you.
Does it face me or?
It faces you.
Me? Thank you. Okay. Good evening, board members. I'm Liz Vale. I'm with the Law Firm of Greenberg-Troward, we're at 2317 Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton. I've been here many times, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, 54 North Main LLC, which is for the two-lot subdivision. It's a reduced-density subdivision of 54 North Main Street. It's comprised of 1.67 acres, 72,740 square feet, and it's in a split-zone, R20 and R7.5 zoning districts. There's an existing 5,300-square-foot office building in the front, and then in the back, there is an existing, pre-existing, nonconforming wood shop. We are proposing to take the wood shop and make it a conforming residential, residence, conforming with zoning. That's the area that's zoned R7.5, which is right here. The front is zoned R20. So we had to go to the zoning board of appeals. We obtained relief for the flaglot entrance, and we are here today hoping that the board will move forward with final conditional approval, since I believe we've addressed every outstanding issue that the board has raised since we've been coming here. I think at one point even John Bennett testified as a neighbor in favor of the application, which is nice that he's here. Does the board have any questions for me at this time?
Last time, we lacked a quorum to.
Yes, last time, you didn't have a quorum, so.
The review. I, I tried to voice all my personal opinions as to the applicant not doing the right thing, but with a relief of 15 feet to pass this more recently expanded off, damn office building. Well, I think with the consensus was that we would approve it, but the people can weigh in now.
No, that's right.
This is.
We've discussed it.
Some, some of us were wounded when we weren't here, but we can, we can put that to a vote to approve it.
Well, I think this is on for work session and for procedure. I think we have to put this on for public hearing and quote, and then.
We.
There was a public hearing.
On the, on the.
The vote is like, this is the vote.
Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought we did.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
No, no, I, I thought it was to vote.
Yeah. I think this was to hold the vote. Yeah, yeah, so you make a motion.
I will, I will make the motion that we approve it.
Is this going to be subject to a written decision?
And, and get counsel to give us a written opinion, where, which I will sign in the absence of the chairman. And if someone seconded it, we can vote.
Sure, I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. The ayes, the ayes, the ayes, record shows the ayes have it.
Thank you so much, board members.
Thank you for your patience, ladies.
It's been a journey. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And patience.
East End Holding LLC. 384042 Job's Lane.
Did we skip?
Uh, 105.
I'm sorry, Bridgehampton Realty. Yeah, 105 Realty, sorry.
Is this where you want us?
Zou Liu Architect.
I'm Chris Burnside from Bridgehampton Realty Group, the owner.
Last time I came here by myself, and I did the site plan, and then the board has asked us to do the yield plan, which we have the square holding to produce the yield plan. And the yield plan, we provided two. One, we have, we, the, the zone is 12.5, R20.5, so we can actually do four on this side, and then keep the existing lot at the house with, with this weird shaped lot, and then we can create four. And then we can also create three, and both will be conforming to the R12.5 zoning. And then we did put the road in the middle, so that all the utility can be under one road.
Right.
And this one has a cul-de-sac in the back and this one in the middle.
Questions? We've got, we've got two, two different alternatives.
Well, I think these are just yield plans, right?
Yield plans, yes.
Just to show you what they could, what they could do. What you're still proposing is just two lots.
Just two lots, correct.
Right.
So when I, when I purchased the property, I actually went to the housing, Curtis Heisman at the Housing Authority to see if they would be interested in it. I also went to the village, because this property backs the village property and it also abuts the town property. So when I purchased it, the idea was I was going to just sever off the house and then offer the rest of it to whoever wants to buy it, is really what it came down to. I think pretty much everybody said no, they weren't interested. So I said, okay, I'll just subdivide it, and put two houses on it.
Right.
Yeah, this is, this is owned by the town, right? This is owned by town, this is owned by the village.
The back portion is owned by the village.
Yeah, this is village, this is town, this is the property that's here, and then there's the little, little piece here.
And it's across from the, the village DPW.
Right.
Actually, they actually use the property to access the town and the village property to mow it, so they've actually mowed it, clear a pathway across.
This is the pathway to go to the back.
So when I spoke to Jacqueline, I guess, Fenlon, she said, you know, they couldn't purchase it with CPC funds, I guess, make sure I get this right, with a house on it, it would have to be kind of, the house would have to be severed off. And then they wanted to have part of it as reserve, and it just went back and forth, and I just was like, listen, it's getting too complicated here. If you want it, buy it. If not, you know, I'll just move on, and you're more than welcome to purchase it if you want it.
But their answer is?
I think that.
Not interested.
Well, it wasn't a firm, no, I'm not interested. They all are interested in it. It's, it's just a process, right?
Yeah.
So they went out, did an appraisal, I just had it appraised as well.
Yep, yeah.
But she said that, you know, you'd have to, they could push it through to subdivide it, but then it was like, well, you can't do affordable housing with town money, so you'd have to get part of the money from the town and some of it from the village, and then nobody would want it in the village. So then it was like, well, if you cluster the houses with Florida Health, they have to make credits, and it was like, too much complication for me. So I just said, look, I'll subdivide it into two lots, two one-acre lots, and then you guys requested a yield study for some reason. And I actually prefer to have three lots, so, you know, take your pick. You want two or three?
It's up to Curtis Heisman.
I mean, it's, you know, it's R12.5, and two one-acre lots is fine. I mean, it's, it's a little excessive for the neighborhood, because most of those houses are on tiny little lots. In fact, the front house, there was a 1920s little house there, which I just renovated. I put in a pool, and it's unfortunately, because I could almost put another house back there, if you think about it, because everybody's trying to, you know, get affordable housing and stuff. I was like, you know, put a little house in the back, but they were, yeah, the village was like.
So, yeah, so let's talk about the plan that you want to do now. So I, I think in the lower left side of that center, it says lot one, the middle one, right?
This one?
Yeah, so to, to, to the left of your finger there, doesn't it, yeah, where it says lot one.
So that's an existing house right now, and kept, and I've kept it in its entirety, and I've completely renovated and added a pool.
So that two-story house that's existing with the garage.
Exactly the same way it's been.
That whole lot there is going to be one lot, separate.
Correct.
Okay, so then the question becomes, what are we going to do above the, now or formerly Joseph?
He's still there.
Yeah, so you want to put two lots back there, correct?
That was my original plan, because that was the simplest course of action. And then when you had asked me to do a three lots, and I sat down.
The yield.
The yield plan.
Oh, yeah.
I was like, great, I'll take three.
And then they fall in love with the three.
Yeah, I prefer the three, yeah. I could put, you know, smaller houses, and it actually works out quite well, except that I would need to purchase some, some credits to get that plan to work, and it's a little bit more expensive with the cul-de-sac and.
How many credits would you need?
I think it was.
We haven't calculated.
No, he, they did tell me. I, I think it was like a 1.2 credits, 1.3 credits.
So not a whole lot of credits?
Yeah, it's not a tremendous amount. I've already tracked them down.
So I think the biggest question from my perspective is, you know, the comprehensive master. So I think the biggest question from my perspective is, you know, the comprehensive master plan and the planning board really disfavors flag lot access, particularly where it's done by easement, right? So the big ques- especially done when it's done by easement. So the big question is, all right, how do you propose accessing however many lots you want to, to put in back there?
Well, we're pretty much exhausted. There is no other way to do it. You could put this little cul-de-sac in and it conforms. But you, no matter how you access the lots off the cul-de-sac, technically there's still gonna be some type of flag to get to it.
But, but, but not by easement, but by right?
By right.
By rights.
By right, yeah, by rights. And even with the...
There's no other way to do it without a flag that anybody can think of. So as long as you're gonna do that, then the objective, the objective would be to minimize the pole and do it by right.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we want to see, what, you know?
And that's what was the original plan that we did.
This is the longer road.
Yeah. Right, and then the second part, as I recall, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But as I recall, you'd originally had the proposed road going down the far east side of the flagpole. And we suggested that in order to landscape that, to make it look nice, to, to make sure you have the space and ability to, you know, landscape that flagpole to make it look nice as possible. Right?
That's, that's it. You hit the nail on the head.
Yeah, okay.
So, so you just...
So what, you know, what do you, what's next? What do we need?
We are not very versed in this. Tell us what to have us to do.
To do the subdivision and then you came back to me and said you wanted to see the, you know, the yield study. So we produced two yield studies as requested.
So we appreciate that. Thank you. We can see what we could do there and how to do it. Alex, what, what do we do next then?
So if the board feels that they have enough information, we could schedule a public hearing, which is required for a subdivision. The board will also need to, at some point, classify the action for secret. This would be, I think, an unlisted action and declare their intent to seek lead agency.
Yeah. Everybody, are you ready, ready to do that?
Yeah, sure.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so I need a motion to, what, do we need a motion to say we're ready to move forward here or?
I would say I have a motion to schedule a public hearing.
All right.
If we wanted to do that on the, the May fifth date, I think there's still plenty of time to do that.
Does that work for you?
I would, not going anywhere.
Yeah, motion to, to have a public hearing for this application on May fifth? Yeah, a second, please?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye?
And would you like also to declare the board's intent to seek lead agency?
Yes.
And for a coordinated review of the unlisted action?
Yeah, so a motion for what Alex said, please. All right, will you make that motion in a second?
A motion that we could seek coordinated review and become lead agency.
Second, all in favor? That's what happens.
Maybe talk some sense into the village. I personally don't see why the village would not want to take an abutting piece of property and the town wouldn't want to take the other piece. I mean, it just...
The process, the process of governance in a village is always bleak.
Yeah.
So the next meeting, you want to put us on the agenda, May, May fifth, right?
May fifth.
Is there a deadline to file anything?
What, what are you looking?
Do we need to file anything? Is there any additional paperwork that we need to file?
Well, you'll have to do the mailing and posting.
That's it.
Is, is there something additional?
I don't know, I'm asking you. Is there any papers that we need to file?
Well, as long as you're still proposing the application as you originally proposed it, unless you have any modifications or changes or additional information.
I think they might have the modification. I don't know if we saw the one with the easement in the center for the...
Okay.
And then I don't think we have a short form, environmental form on this, which we'll need to send out with the coordinated review.
I don't see it in the file.
Okay, yeah, if we don't have that...
So if you could do that, you know, you just use the online mapper to fill out the short environmental form
and then you put in your project details. And if you can get that into the village as soon, that, that form, which will be pretty quick to complete as soon as possible. So that, that will go out with the coordinated review.
And I think we wanted to see the building envelopes shown. And for example, if you have any landscape details for the flag lot, you'll submit that as well.
We did that on the first, the first plan, I think we gave you.
Okay.
Did they submit it already?
It's the first, look at the first document.
I think I submitted the short.
All right, I'm looking through it online.
Board of Health, driveway access, the whole thing.
I just, I don't see...
All right, I, I do see it here, sorry.
See the short environmental, I did that. I think the only thing probably is the landscape. If you suggest me to do some landscaping. Um, so if we, you're gonna go for this one?
I'm just gonna keep the two, keep the two down.
You make the two.
You gotta make a choice.
I mean, if you did, if the board didn't have an objection to doing three, I would clearly prefer to do three lots. But I don't really plan to do a small process.
So if we're gonna do a, a middle access, like whatever lot, this one or that one, do we need to, uh, is there a deadline for us to put it in or is it already in there? Do you consider it already in there, right? We already put it in.
We, we have the, the plan, that, the, the original plan, the two lot plan.
We have this one too. You submitted it too. You submitted this.
I only submitted this as the yield study.
He did these two for the yield study. It should be in your, in your file.
Yeah, we have the yield study, but I'm saying for the, that, that's my understanding is that the, that's the plan that's submitted for, for subdivision.
Correct.
Application. So the, in the original form that you're looking at there, you showed the easement all the way to the right. And the, the request was that you keep the lot lines where they are, but put the easement in the center so it can be landscaped on either side. So I think having that plan just revised to show that moved easement so that they can see that it can, we can actually provide the, um, the screening for the driveway that is preferred.
And you did that landscape plan, the cedars going up the road.
Hmm, okay, got it.
Okay. Okay, you know what to do?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I, I bow to Alex all the time. All the boards, we proud of Alex.
Okay, uh, now East End Holding. John, that's you, right?
Hi, John Bennett. And so this is on Job's Lane. And am I doing it this way? So Job's Lane, we're gonna take down all these buildings. And we...
What, what numbers on Job's Lane?
You know, this is, uh, what used to be here.
It's the fountain. It's the, it's right, the outdoor.
Thirty-six, yeah, fountain, yes.
Like a mall.
Thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-two.
So to speak, yeah.
Yeah, if you're Palm Beach, you would be really doing great, but we're not, you know?
This has always been like a real retail dead end.
Yes, because it was really pretty for a while, you know? It's nice, it's nice to have a fountain, but it's not that. We need to change it. We need to get some life there.
Yeah, no, 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 I couldn't, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
But thank you, yeah. This is, you know, there's a sort of fountain in there. This is...
Oh, no, no, these are the bricks.
Oh, the bricks, yes, it's the bricks.
The bricks.
Otherwise, none of the planning board is bricks and flamingos.
Bricks and flamingos.
Bricks and flamingos.
Same owner?
Same owner.
Same owner. Replay. It was gonna, last time it was before the board. It was to combine the properties, which were all old houses that were torn down. And it was gonna be, people objected because number one, there was a neighbor that was upset.
Yeah.
And number two, it was too big, about by two feet on the maximum scale. But it was a fraction of, of the house at the structure of the corner and it was gonna go too far back.
The way this is set up now actually is to F. If you look at F, that's gonna be a... If everything works out with the other boards, that's going to be a walkway.
All the way through the block?
Yeah, with, if everything works out, the thought is just to dedicate it. I don't want to make any promises, gonna have to see what's gonna happen.
That was the, that was the prior master plan.
Yeah, just to dedicate that to the village.
Simi thought it was wonderful to get more access to a parking lot that no one uses, so he has to get more access.
So, John, sorry to interrupt, but I had, I had a really hard time trying to decipher this from the drawings.
It should be. Let me, let me tell you what happened here. This, 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 the way the existing lots are, and I'm, I'm really dating myself right now, but this was gerrymandered because many, many years ago, there was a house there. It was a single-family residence there.
Yep, it was a house.
And I remember, 'cause, these things stick in your memory. My, my mom and I used to drive, the woman who lived there from church up on Hell Street, she, she lived there. And I remember as a young kid, I remember being amazed that, oh my God, somebody actually lives on Job's Lane. It was a, it was an old house. So when they set it up this way, it was gerrymandered to take care of that, there was a house here. There was literally a single-family residence here, which then went away. And this, I guess, you know, Tom Burke and what was his name, Phillips, had the idea to do this in here. And unfortunately, it's just been a retail dead zone ever since it was, it's too bad. You know, you'd think it would have some potential. And people would say, oh, if you have like a food place, you could bring people in. But until there's a sewer, which God does when that's gonna happen, that's just never gonna happen. So what's, if you look at the center, you'll see where all the transfers are going. And that effect, the easiest thing is just to look at the, I think, is to look at the proposed lot configuration. It's gonna be three straight lots, the way they should be. There is no minimum lot area requirement in the village business zone, none, zero. So there are three lots now. We're trying to make it into three more commonsensical lots. I mean, you've got strange stuff. You have, let's have this one lot that has twelve feet of frontage. So these are all gonna be twenty-two, twenty-two feet.
But why three lots?
Three buildings.
So the idea is to put three long and narrow buildings there?
Yep.
Gotcha.
It's no, it's no longer zone for residential. Is it going to be the commercial structures?
It hasn't been. It's village business. You could, you, I don't think, I don't think you could have, well, you could have, I think the only residential stuff you can have in a village business is, is with a special permit.
Apartments with a special permit.
Show me, where is the part with the, you said there's going to be a walk-through between?
F.
Just one, just on the one side?
Yeah, it's on the west side.
Okay, so then, right, okay, so this is, and then what is the, so the other is, the jagged one is something else?
That's the way it is now.
Right, they're just...
There's no courtyard. There's three lots, no courtyard.
Oh, okay, but this is, okay, this is the walkway. Okay, sorry, yeah, thank you.
The, the building is, will probably, I mean, some of these non-conformities are gonna go away because the buildings will probably be, this will be more open back here. But I think it's great because it gives this access. And, you know, the thought, my client said, well, maybe I'll just give an easement. And my response candidly was, just dedicate it. If it's an easement, you still have liability, so just dedicate it.
It's on the east, east side.
So, and I think hopefully Susan will be less concerned, because I know she was very concerned about it. Because you can have, in the village business area, you can have either a zero lot line, a party wall. But this will give some light and air to her antique store in here. So hopefully, I don't want to speak for her, but hopefully that'll be helpful and that's, that was the place to put it.
But she...
She owns Caldwell Alexander's backyard.
Caldwell Alexander, wow, oh my gosh, that's right.
That was his, that was his house.
You're talking about the antique store there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The antique store is...
It's here, is that, that's, it's right above the walkway, right?
Right above the walkway, to the west of the walkway.
Yes, it's noted here.
And Susan...
The east of the walkway.
And I know she was concerned because the prior plan had a zero setback. The prior plan had a zero lot line setback, which you can have in the village business zone. You, you don't have to have, I mean, it's, 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 it's set up to do party walls or just walls built up against one another. Uh, look at the, if you look at, for example, the, oh, what's with the White's Pharmacy? It's all over, I'm sorry, all over the White's Pharmacy and the building to, next to it, what is that? That's the real estate store.
Used to be the bookstore, right?
Used to be the bookstore, unfortunately, the bookstore's not over there, yeah, but that's a, that was...
Objectibles or something?
Zero lot line. Yeah, unfortunately, the bookstore's not over there. You have to go to Sag Harbor to see Greg.
It's sad that we don't have a bookstore. It's a bad reflection and, sorry, I'm on my first, but...
Before the former one attracted a petition of about, I guess, fifteen hundred people to make it a restaurant or, you know? It was too deep and they were gonna make it shorter and have the village trustees grant part of the parking lot to deal with the plumbing and put housing upstairs, which was part of the plan. To get maximum housing above all the stores that are being built.
I don't think there's gonna be any new housing above these village stores until you...
This is the history of the prior application, which was so protracted.
Are these gonna be, are they two-story buildings or?
Yeah, two-story buildings.
With what, with, we tell them on the site board also?
It'd be office or retail, one of the two, yeah.
So...
Would it be easier if we, if I bring in the actual ultimate site plan? I see it. I mean, that's really...
Have it with you?
Yeah, it's, it's all drawn.
Yeah, that would be a lot, that'd be helpful.
Billy, can we, do we have, let me have it, let me see.
Because it, it is, I'm looking at this, when you've designated lot one, has a building on it, right?
Lots, lot, lot, one and three. Two galleries in the courtyard. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
There's two galleries in the courtyard.
Yes, you're okay.
Thank you, it's, I mean, these are still in draft.
These are still in draft, but I, just conceptually, I'm sure you was going to...
Oh, absolutely.
So these are still in draft, but I just want you to generally see, these are CMX drawing the plans, but...
Well, CMX don't...
Yeah, so in, in site plan, they become...
Can we get closer on the camera?
It's actually three. No, this is the one, okay, here it is, it's three.
If you could push it up a little.
It also, I'm gonna say, it also adds, we can, we can get some spaces in the back. Because interestingly enough, there are quite a bit of parking variances on this, as you can imagine, because there ain't no parking on site. So hopefully we'll be able to get some parking back there. If we can, if we can fit the wastewater back and, and we'll have new wastewater and all that great stuff. Trying to see if CMX has any elevations. No, it's always gonna be a more typical, I mean, this is subject to review by the A or B, but it's gonna be, look like the rest of Job's Lane and Main Street look. You have continuous buildings.
Are those buildings each, like, there's some space on either side within the lot as...
No, the, the, the three buildings will have party walls.
Oh, okay, so is that the same one? Those are three, that's one big building or wait?
I'm sorry, Amanda, what?
I'm not understanding the drawing exactly where it's...
That is, you're looking at the three lots developed, so it will look from the outside like one building.
You're right.
But it's, it's gonna, it'll function as three individual buildings.
Okay, but it's one building and three, okay. So it's a large building.
So, so that's what I'd understand. If it looks like one building and it is effectively one building with one roof, right? Why do I need three lots?
So they can sell three buildings.
But it's one building.
Well, it's, it's a space inside the building. It's like a condo, right?
It's like...
It's like a condo.
Except they're, they're fee title.
Yeah, exactly. So you're, I gotcha. And then do those buildings go all the way north, south to the...
No, wait here, I wanted to show, that's, we're trying, one of the nice aspects of this is we can get some parking in there in the back now.
So where that building is back there now, that's kind of empty?
It's gonna be shorter.
Yeah, it'll be shorter.
That would be, then be...
We're sitting a hundred and thirty-six feet going back, so how large will the building be?
Seventy-five feet.
Oh, okay, so it's almost half.
Because I have this code section that says that they're only supposed to be seventy-five feet deep.
Got it. So, so the, the south end is gonna be, is, is gonna be parking?
Yeah, yeah, and parking and septic.
Gotcha.
So I think that makes a lot of sense. The reason you can do that is, you know, that, this stuff was all before. Those limitations came in, a lot of variances granted here. So now you have, you'll be able to take all that space and use it to approve it.
You see three separate owners, or one owner and they lease out the different buildings?
It could be.
You're just reserving the right to break it apart and sell it later?
Exactly.
But in its first iteration, you see one owner, one owner making one large building or having the three?
Well, technically, technically, they're, I don't want to mislead anybody. Technically, they're three buildings.
Okay.
They're, they're gonna be styled to look like...
Okay, so it's just their outer walls.
Yeah, which you can do, because you, you can have zero, zero lot line setbacks in the village.
But when you walk in, there's walls and they're separate inside, actually. Okay.
And John, on the current site plan, the lot one, the box that's designated lot one, which... which is a one-story building, I can't see, how wide is that building?
Uh, thirty-two plus fourteen, it's, what is that? It's about thirty-seven feet wide, layer down. I'm just reading the two courses along the back. See, one says thirty-two, and one says fourteen, so it's like, between thirty-six and thirty-seven, square feet, so that's all, it's gonna be a clean slate.
On the Jobbs Lane side, it's, it's...
Oh, on, I'm sorry, on the Jobbs Lane side?
Yeah.
Which one were you talking about, Mark, I'm sorry? I apologize. Sorry.
This one. How, how wide is this building right here?
That's the one to the west, right?
Correct.
Well, at its fattest, because it's a pretty strange building, isn't it? Um...
Like excluding the porch, I mean, I see a twenty-five there, is that...
Oh, yeah, it's like, yeah, twenty, excluding, it's twenty-five including the porch, yeah.
Okay.
I think, what was in there? That, that French, uh...
Was that that French thing?
Philip Broke. Which I was told, which I was told means crankshaft, in French. That's where the, believe it or not, that's where it goes.
Yeah. So there are comps...
I can't make this stuff up.
There are comps along Jobbs Lane for twenty-five-foot-wide stores, spaces. You know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, they're even smaller sometimes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no, interesting, the village business, there's no, there's not, there's no minimum size lot, and there are no, the only setbacks are either zero or fifteen.
Yeah, Alex, do you have any questions on this one?
No, just note that this will come back to the board for a site plan review when it's proposed. It'll likely, it'll have to go to the architecture review board.
Yep, of course.
Presume if there's anything that doesn't comport with zoning, it would also go to the zoning board, but likely it would comply unless there are parking relief or something.
It's interesting, parking and ADA access. Yeah.
There were issues last time.
We're actually gonna bring in some spaces where there, I mean, I can't believe the number of variances. I mean, guilty of their job. You got a lot of parking variances. It's a long time ago, that's, a long time ago. A lot of variances for parking, which we'll try to, we're gonna try to create some on-site parking.
Yep. Lisa, anything you wanna flag at this point?
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see, I know it's for site plan, but, um, like, I'd love to see the, how they're executing it.
Yeah, sure, can you do that, Billy?
Okay.
Let me see how far along CMX is. We'll, we'll get to, we'll get you what he has.
Yeah, 'cause it's just, you know, I mean, I, I think that it, um, you know, they're, they're, just like every site, they're constrained because of septic in the village, which is why they can't put apartments over these.
That's right.
So there's gonna be little offices and shops, I suppose. Um, and I think that getting that right-of-way access to the rear lot is, is really a nice feature. Um, it, when you get to site plan, it'll be nice to consider, like, you know, if there's any landscaping potential or anything in the back there, to, to look, to make it look really nice on that side. Um, but the, the code doesn't have any guidelines for the village business district, like he said, so there's...
It's wide open.
It's, it's really just a matter of, when I first looked at this, my concern was, I, I, I didn't know that the buildings were coming down. And I'm like, this makes no sense.
Makes no sense at all.
Why would we change the lot lines and, and put lot lines between buildings?
Right, right.
Um, but if, you know, if, if the lots are going, if all the buildings are being demolished, then, um, then that concern is, is no longer one.
I think my only question is procedurally, do we have to have a public hearing for a lot line amendment? I think it's a type two under CEQA.
Is it type two, it's, I'll give you the actual quote, what is it? It's NYCRR six-one-seven-five, it's a, it's an, it's a, it's an adjustment, it's a lot adjustment.
But I think this is, it is re-subdividing three lots into four?
Hmm.
Right.
Oh, you can also waive a public hearing. So in the case of a re-subdivision, which altered lot lines' dimensions of lots previously created, the board may modify or waive any provision, the subdivision regulations include any provision that relate to submission approval filing, and you can waive the public hearing.
Just say anything about the, you know, increasing the...
You wouldn't waive the public hearing for, I'm gonna finish. You wouldn't waive the public hearing for the site plan? Of course you wouldn't do that. Yeah. But I don't really, what there is to look, I've got, I'm, I wanna create these three conforming village business lots, where there are three, and the three that are there don't make any sense. Right. I don't know, it doesn't, you know, I'm gonna have to come back for a very detailed site plan.
Site plan.
Uh, I'm gonna have to go to the ARB, depending upon how Chris determines what the parking issue is, 'cause there are existing parking variances with one, which one would run with the land, and I'm putting some new parking in?
Yeah.
So we may or may not go to the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, um, this is either gonna be an easement for the public, or dedicated, again, I think it should just be dedicated, but, which is something that you can't require, but I think it's, it's good planning, makes sense.
Right. So you were looking for just a smell test tonight from us?
Oh, I'd love you to approve it.
I would think if the board felt in plan, we might ask council to prepare a written decision. I think that would be typical for a subdivision, that way we'll have something in, in writing.
You're gonna be able to fully torture me on the site plan review.
So we're approving.
Oh, I think we might ask council to write or prepare a written decision for review at the next meeting?
Yeah.
And that, review, or reviewing exactly what?
Well, council, right, for a lot line amendment, council, right.
So that's all we're asking for here, is a lot line amendment at this point?
Well, I, I will just highlight, and I know it's a technicality, that's kind of a, a pain in this case, 'cause the fourth lot is being created to, deed to the village, but the way the code is written like that is, you are actually creating an extra lot, 'cause you're starting from three, so I just wanna make sure we're not doing something that's not, not an illegal issue, 'cause, especially with the waivers, where it says that, that as long as, doesn't...
That's, that's the sort of thing...
Not create additional lot. I agree, it's like a technicality in this point that, like, I would love to just ignore them.
That's the sort of thing that when I was a municipal board, I would just sort of pull my fire on, 'cause this is a good thing, so why would you hold it up when this is gonna be a part of benefit? Regardless of whether or not it's dedicated.
I'm just putting the question to Janine.
Well, I think we'll, I'm gonna look into it, I'm gonna characterize it as he characterizes it, and see if we'll go from there. I think the best thing is to do, John, is let me look into it, you know?
Um, you can, again, you can, when it comes to alteration of the lot lines, you can waive anything. I'm not creating another lot, per se, offering this area for dedication. Bobby Smith calls it a lot, I guess, so...
Well...
No, no, whatever, whatever you wanna do, Jean, I don't want you to be uncomfortable.
Well, I wanna make the board comfortable, otherwise then I'm uncomfortable, right? When they're uncomfortable. So, yeah, 'cause you got, you're starting with three, and you're adding, but you're really taking away from three to give four, right? Is that...
Well, the fourth is just the walkway.
That walkway, I'm just saying, right, that four...
It's not a lot, per se.
Well, okay, you have space.
It's just, yeah...
Yeah, you have it showing it.
Well, maybe, maybe if it's a... Maybe it's a three-lot subdivision with Lot Three dedicating X, right?
You could do it that way.
Yeah.
You could do it that way.
Sure. Well, in my, it's the same thing.
Gotcha.
But I like the way he did it, so you can see it, and they all come out with twenty-two point three two.
But you want all the lots to be even, so you're, you're not really taking part of three, 'cause you have to change all the lot, you know, to include that.
And, and quite, quite honestly, I...
I don't know.
It's a public service.
Yeah, it's a great thing.
And Susan was very upset about that, going right up to the, their property line, so I figured that would help them out, 'cause they're good citizens.
But you're not making Lot Three skinny, Lot Three is, is drawn, is the same as the other.
Yes, they're all the same.
So you wouldn't say it's taking just from three, I think?
No, 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 I understand.
Or unless you were gonna make that wider and then give it away.
Well, if I, if you took the five foot and added it to twenty-two point three two...
Yeah, you could do that, if you could, yeah, but, yeah, you could add it to three. It's just whatever works.
This is really, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Whatever works.
Technically, it's gonna merge with the right-of-way when it's dedicated to the village, so it's not really gonna stand as separate.
That's interesting.
Arguably, arguably.
It'll merge with Jobbs Lane, I guess, and also, or merge with the village parking lot.
So, Janine, if you draft something and circulate it, and, and check, you know, for Lisa's issue, that, you know, if that works, and we'll do it at the next meeting on the fifth.
To helping the neighbor.
I just want everyone to be comfortable, this is not, I'm not trying to say...
Yeah, nice, 'cause there's no, there's...
You're not gonna come back for a site plan.
You'd have to go all the way down to...
I just wanted to check.
That was the story that we were...